You could download it as a PDF. Yeah, I can full screen. Maybe it's not helpful. Some of it's kind of small.
It's freezing in here. We're in that period where the HVAC doesn't, um, doesn't adjust.
Okay, well, the meeting is about to begin. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Cunningham Township Board. This is a rescheduled meeting from May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Today is May twentieth. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Supervisor Chenoweth? Assessor Owana?
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four rescheduled meeting and the April eighth, twenty twenty four meeting. Could we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Are there any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Uh, any additions to the agenda? Okay. First item on the addition is presentations and public participation. Uh, we'll ask for public participation first. Does anyone wish to address the Cunningham Township Board? Okay, move on to the presentation scheduled, um, by Trinity Lewis. It's called the Campaign for Fair Housing: Source of Income Protections in Urbana, Illinois. Trinity is a master's candidate in the UI Department of Urban and Regional Planning. Welcome.
Can I just skip just a few?
Oh, sure.
That is fine. First, I just want to thank Trinity Lewis, who just graduated with her master's degree. Um, she had her graduation this last weekend, so I want to congratulate you, Trinity. Um, she has been with our office for a year, which is longer than a lot of folks are with us. I kept, um, encouraging her to stay, and she chose to, um, have our office as her site for her urban capstone. Um, the focus has been, um, something that our office has worked on for some time. I'm sure the board is aware that we've been running a fair housing campaign for a while. Um, we were involved in helping to pass the source of income protections along with many people across the state. Um, and that really provided, in many ways, it leveled the playing field, even though Urbana has had that, um, law in place for a period of time. Um, having it statewide, I think, really helps with enforcement. Um, that also allowed us to start working with a statewide coalition of folks working on fair housing and to work with Hope Center for Fair Housing. So, um, this is in our third year of that work. We've held a number of trainings and, and support, and we really, um, in this year, wanted to lean in with Trinity. Um, she, we gave her several different options for her capstone, what she might want to focus on in terms of our organization's needs, and she chose this one. Um, so we've been really, um, focused on, um, the, uh, source of income protections at the township level with a specific focus on township participants. So we were kind of doing broad education. We've done landlord education. We've, um, sent things home to Urbana residents um, through the rental registration program for years. We've had an insert that's included. We've included it in flyers that we've sent out to everyone. So those were very broad tactics, and this time we really wanted to get better understanding of what our participants were facing. Um, and so Trinity has really focused her attention, um, on that piece and really providing direct service and assistance to guide people through that process. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you, Trinity, for all the work and time that you've put in, and I will pass it over to her. She did a poster presentation um, for her final report, and I also have shared with you in your packet, um, there was a copy on the back table. I'll put another copy there, um, for folks who would like to see it. But she also has a written report with citations, um, in addition to the poster that she'll go over. So I'm, both of us, either of us are happy to answer any questions. I've, um, I have supervised her capstone throughout this time period, but I will pass it over to Trinity to give her presentation.
Can you?
All right, thank you. All right, sorry. Thank you so much, Danielle. I appreciate that. And yes, I've been a part of Cunningham Township for the past year as an intern. And so, um, for my capstone project, for my master's in urban planning, uh, I focused on this housing campaign. Um, and we are, in particular, talking about source of income protections. And I'm gonna start to zoom in here. So, um, in the state of Illinois, they, um, in twenty twenty three, uh, they have listed source of income as a protected class regarding the Human Rights, uh, Act in Illinois. And so, uh, what is included in source of income is like housing vouchers, rental assistance, um, social security, uh, TANF, uh, all these things that people may have that are legal, um, other legal forms of income that are despite like employer-employee type of income. And so, uh, the city of Urbana has had this in their human rights ordinance, uh, for a long time now. And so, um, what we wanted to do is to actually look and see if this is actually being enforced amongst the community. Um, so, uh, we sent out a survey to, uh, our clients at Cunningham, uh, to, um, just submit, well, it was a part, part one of our survey, uh, dealt with just specifically what type of discrimination people were facing. Uh, so we asked if they were, um, voucher holders or non-voucher holders. Um, and then for those, uh, who were voucher holders, there were a series of questions of why they could have been denied. Uh, the top reasons that, uh, voucher holders said that they were denied is that they were told they didn't have enough income, uh, they were showed housing that they weren't interested in. Uh, they were advised or told that they don't take vouchers, and, you know, they were denied for using a voucher. And then, uh, for the, um, non-voucher holders, their top reasons, uh, for discrimination were, um, their source of income, their age, their sex, if they have a mental slash physical disability, and their student status. And so, oop, sorry. And so, uh, for who's affected by this, um, that was part two of our survey that we sent out to get more demographic information on, um, who was affected by this. And so, um, the respondents that, um, reapplied to the survey were, um, they were all, uh, women. Um, they were all majority single women, uh, and those with children, and they come from, um, black, uh, racially black backgrounds, and they're low-income residents. Uh, they were, uh, majority of them also used housing vouchers, and they were above the age of twenty five, and their education experience was, uh, mostly high school slash GED with, uh, about a couple that were, um, two-year, um, college programs. Uh, and so, uh, we've also been partnering with, uh, Hope Fair Housing, uh, fair housing, um, organization that's based out of Wheaton, Illinois. And, uh, so when we have gotten respondents as well from the survey, we'd send out, uh, information, uh, regarding, uh, who to contact, uh, if they have questions about, if they, um, are facing discrimination, or who, you know, how to get that support. And so, uh, they're very good at that. They do investigate, uh, for free, actually, and, uh, they did actually, um, if there is like something that they can't necessarily do, they do direct you to other legal, uh, sources to do that. Um, and so we've just been sending all of our respondents to the survey, uh, to Hope as well. And then we've also connected them to the Urbana, uh, Human Relations and Equity Office. Um, oop, sorry again. Uh, so we've connected people with that as well after they apply in our survey. Um, and so, uh, uh, yeah, and then, um, for education and outreach, uh, we've been trying to, you know, educate, you know, our residents on what housing discrimination is and if they, it is happening to them, uh, because most people either don't realize that's what's happening or they're afraid to come forward. And so, uh, we're trying to make, um, a whole campaign based around this. So we've made, well, I've made flyers uh, that talked in particular about the source of income protections. Um, and this describes, uh, what a source of income is and, uh, you know, what can and cannot happen under the law. Um, because since this is a more recent statewide, um, protected class, not many people know about this. And then, so, uh, the other flyer that we made, um, just talked about general types of discrimination and, uh, in particular in Urbana, and, um, all the rights that are protected under the, uh, Urbana Human Rights Ordinance. And, um, we have, uh, information on the back of these flyers that, um, lists contact information, uh, for, um, Hope and Township, uh, the Land of Lincoln Legal Aid, uh, Human Relations Office, um, the, uh, Tenant Union, and, um, yeah. And then, we, uh, also specified, uh, what details needed to be included, uh, in, uh, their filing of a complaint. Um, because if most people don't come forward to file these complaints, we don't know what's happening. And also, uh, there's no way for people to be held accountable. Um, so we included that information as well. And, uh, this is a bus flyer that we have made, uh, for the Champagne, Urbana Mass Transit, um, Department for the, uh, buses. And so, um, we, uh, contacted them, and so we're going to try to run this ad within the, uh, inside of the buses, uh, for as long as we can. Um, and it, the QR code links to our survey, uh, so that if people do see this and they're like, oh, this is something I faced, they're able to just scan the QR code, and they also, we listed our phone numbers, emails, and websites as well. And, oops, oh my gosh, I keep doing that. Yes, so, uh, that's, uh, what we've been working on. Um, so, uh, Hope has, um, uh, had, um, connections with, uh, local landlords and such here. Um, and I, I can't necessarily disclose what's happening, but, uh, they have been, um, trying to hold other landlords and landlord properties accountable here, and, uh, we're partnering with them so that way we can support our residents too and our clients, considering the fact of our, a lot of our clients, uh, have to use housing vouchers. They come to us for rental assistance, general assistance. And, um, there are landlords here that try not to take that, or, um, will still try to evict people in illegal ways or discriminate them from accessing housing in illegal ways. And so, to me, also, this also describes how, uh, the national trends of people who are discriminated against for housing, um, as well as, um, mainly black women with children from low-income neighborhoods. So seeing that just from this little snippet of a survey that we did for Cunningham, to me, just kind of reflects what's happening nationally and, which has happened historically as well. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Trinity? Chris?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Trinity, for the report and the hard work here. Um, you might not be able to answer this, but you, um, in your survey, do you have any sense of how much of this is going on in terms of discrimination, like? Uh, and I know I'm asking for a number, but you might not have that, but how frequently and how pervasive is this problem of discrimination in Urbana?
Um, from, like, what we've done, we sent this out. We, this was client-based from us in particular at first. So I think, uh, in total, we've had twenty-one respondents to the survey. And so I think from how many clients that we actually have and actually the size of Urbana, um, and people who actually want to come forward and know what's happening, I think that is a pretty decent size. I think honestly, any number of people facing housing discrimination based on, you know, characteristics that you can't control is a problem of itself. So, um, having that problem at all, to me, is something that we need to work on. But still, to me, with the sample size that we have had, I think that, um, is something that we definitely need to be looking into and watching.
Mary Alice?
Thank you. I appreciated the background in your document. It was really nicely put together, so thank you for that, and congratulations for graduating.
Thank you.
Just to kind of, uh, expand a little bit on what Chris's question was. So you had twenty-one respondents for voucher holders and seven respondents for non-voucher holders, I believe, with the two numbers.
Oh, wait, oh, sorry. Wait, you mean for, oh, okay, so for the part one of the survey.
Of that, I think.
It's okay, it's okay, yeah. For, it was, um, eleven voucher holders and then, um, eleven non-voucher holders. And then, uh, those who responded back, there were seven that responded back to the demographic questions, and all of those, uh, seven, they were all women. Uh, there were five that were black women, two that were white women. Um, uh, only a couple didn't have children, but most of them had more than one child. Um, and, uh, none of them were students as well, so none of them attended the university, and, uh, they all came from low-income backgrounds.
So your population size was eleven, is that correct?
Well, twenty-one.
Twenty-one, sorry, twenty-one for both. I, I thought I heard number eleven.
Oh, no, that was, uh, that was, eleven was for the people who were voucher holders, and then the other eleven was for non-voucher holders.
Right, right. Um, and, and just, you had mentioned that you can't go into specifics about the landlords with Hope. Have there been any formal lawsuits?
Uh, yes, they're currently in a legal, um, court case right now.
In, in Urbana?
Um, with, uh, property companies from Urbana, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Grace?
Uh, thanks again for the presentation, and your report is very lovely. Thank you for sharing that as well. Um, I liked your recommendations, and two that's really stuck out to me that are relevant to us, I think, are, um, the city enforcing fines and things for these violations and having housing testers to kind of go out and really investigate. And that's something that I absolutely, um, you know, support in future collaboration, and I didn't know if you, indoor supervisor, had any specific recommendations on how to kind of get that ball rolling, or if you're interested in collaborating on some of that.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, we definitely all need to be collaborating. Um, I think that, um, for us right now, uh, I, like, we're just now partnering with Hope and they're getting the testers and such set up. So I think, like, once we get that officially set up, we can really get the ball rolling. Um, and so, uh, not too long ago, Danielle sent out a email blast about, um, people who could sign up to do that. So we'll send out another one uh, and try to also get Hope to try to, um, advertise it as well. And then, um, I feel like once we're able to get even more information and have people file more complaints about, uh, what's happening just by, you know, filling out the survey or contacting, uh, us or Hope or, uh, the Human Relations, uh, Commission, um, any of that, I think, would be the beginning of trying to, uh, you know, solve this issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? Uh, Sharice?
Um, Michael, I have a question as well regarding, um, where the landlord enforcement, you know, in, in, enforcing the fair housing. Question, uh, the one question I have is, has there been any outreach or any kind of education or seminars or whatever for the landlords to let them know what they can and what they cannot do?
Yes, uh, we actually just had a, uh, fair housing training with Hope, which was opened up to not only like our community organizations and city, um, city council and all that stuff, uh, but it was also opened up to the public and landlords, and there were a couple of landlords that did attend the event. So, uh, we do plan on trying to, uh, provide not just educational information on, uh, for renters, but also for landlords. Um, so, and, you know, if, there was a way, because I know you guys have a landlord registry as well, so I feel like along with that, some sort of, you know, training and information to be set, um, to know, like, what they can and what they cannot do. Um, so, uh, yeah, so we are opening up, uh, we have opened up, uh, that option for them as well to attend our meetings.
Okay, one more question I have is, um, regarding enforcement of, um, of the, um, fair housing, uh, requirements. Um, how, what, is there a form that someone fills out? Is, how, how, what are the steps that one would have to go through to say, this landlord is discriminating against me or my cousin or whoever? You know, what kind of, uh, what are, what are the steps? And if you, if you have that kind of rubric or that kind of something, some kind of form that can be filled out, where can a, a tenant or a potential tenant find that information?
Yeah, so. Trinity, is it possible, could I answer this? Because we are institutionalizing the work, so I want to tell you what it will look like going forward. Um, so Trinity is at the, I mean, we did the initial groundwork. We've had other interns work on this issue. Trinity did a focus study on it, and we increased our, our relationship with Hope Fair Housing. We will have the bus ad that specifically because Hope and Township have agreed to cross-refer folks so that we can keep track of all of the referrals. Um, the QR code goes to a township form. Um, so we have now assigned the fair housing work to a staff member, a permanent staff member. So what they, what we would like to see, certainly, anyone can call the city, anyone can call Hope Fair Housing, anyone can call Township. Those are three places, or you could call Land of Lincoln. Those are all places that folks can call. For our advertising, we're sending folks to a survey that we have put together and have refined over the course of this year. You know, we've added different things and made it easier to use. That QR code goes to that survey. That survey then allows us to track all complaints. Sometimes folks have a property maintenance issue. And so we get the survey, and we're like, here's how you talk to the city about a property management, a property maintenance issue. Sometimes it's more about a, a conflict with the landlord. We can then send people to Dispute Resolution Institute, or we can send them, uh, to the Tenant Union. So the, we're, we're wanting to gather the data through that survey and continue that. And they, we also have a human being who's helping to route folks to the various places that they can go. If it appears to be a discrimination issue, which in many cases it were, it was, but not all of the twenty-two folks who we've surveyed, um, or twenty-one folks, not all of them were, um, discrimination situations. Um, the majority were. Uh, but essentially, then we can try to route them to the various needs. Oftentimes, it ends up they need rental assistance. So we're trying to kind of be, um, what people should do is they can go to our website, ctso.org. They can fill out the survey, and we will have a staff member reach out to them to help them navigate this issue. Um, but they are also welcome to call Hope Fair Housing and that, or Township. Our numbers are on the ad as part of our collaboration. Or the city of Urbana, um, is also a point of contact. So from there, we, we will kind of take it and try to figure out what's going on so that we can best help people.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Danielle.
Any other questions? Mary Alice, could you take the chair? I just had a couple of questions, so I understand.
May I recognize you?
Oh, yes, thank you.
The chair recognizes thing. Thanks. Just a couple of questions, so I understand the, the data you're presenting.
Um, first, there were, um, you said you had a total of twenty-one, um, respondents. On the two graphs that you present for the types of discrimination, how many people does that represent? I know you said not all of them had discrimination complaints.
Oh, um, one, yeah, one was, it's a total of eleven people each.
Eleven people each?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and the other question is, on the survey, the, there's one question that you asked, what city did it happen in? So are you presenting only information from people who experienced discrimination from a property located in Urbana? Is it tied to a specific property or a specific property owner who might have, um, uh, property in the city of Urbana?
Um, well, I, it definitely, uh, ties to property here in Urbana. Um, I mean, uh, not necessarily property that has to be, um, not located either in Urbana, but, uh, I mean, in general, like, we want to focus on if they were, uh, for, focusing on the source of income discrimination, which is Urbana-based. But if somebody who did live in Champagne said, oh, we, I've lived in Champagne and I faced this, I mean, we can still refer them, obviously.
But was that included in your s, results?
Yeah, I'm looking at the survey results. One person said Champagne, so we sent it to our participants who at some point lived in the township.
Yeah.
Um, one person responded that it was a champagne address. Um, most responded Urbana, and there were a few that said, I don't remember
Yeah.
which city it occurred in.
Okay, okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
But we have been trying to, uh, to determine especially if it was a city outside of the state. And we also fi, look at when it happened, because if they're outside of Urbana, and it happened before January of, what is it, twenty twenty-three? it happened before January of, what is it, 2023? Then essentially, it potentially was authorized. So we're, we've been trying to zero in on whether or not it's actionable based on the date and based on the location, which is why we asked those two questions.
Okay, thanks. Answer to Sharice's question, the Human Rights and Equity Office here at the city has reached out to every single landlord in the city of Urbana with updated information on source of income discrimination and other things. So they have been in contact with landlords in the city.
Yeah, I would say, just, just, and I saw, I'm a landlord, so I recently received that message from the HRO. We have held between the, within our collaboration within the community, we've held five landlord education events in three years, in-person education events with multiple landlords. We have sent out between the city and Township, at least four notifications to every single person who's registered through rental registration around that, and we did a postcard that went to every single resident. Now, obviously, there could be out-of-town landlords, but that allowed residents to know. I would comfortably say, when I started this, I went and spoke to the property management professionals, and I would say they were generally mixed in terms of their awareness around the law and fair housing. I would say it was poor level of knowledge and awareness. There were some that had been around for a while, and they were aware. And I, I don't think, I would, I would be very surprised if a landlord would not understand the law at this point, given how much education we've done. So at this point, we're really looking towards the, to the tenants, to connect them to resources that are effective, responsive, and going to take this to court if it needs to go to court. And I think, just to speak to Grace's question, I think, right now, Hope Fair Housing has money to do testing. They have received CDBG funds from other cities in, in the state, and that may be something that you, they are an amazing partner. They were going to be present at the meeting last Monday, they couldn't be today. Tenant Union would also, was also going to be present, and I had some of the folks who had actually submitted to the survey who were going to show up. It happens, we didn't have quorum, so unfortunately, you didn't get a chance to hear from them. But I certainly could bring Hope Fair Housing to speak with you all when, when it's mutually available, so that you could discuss that with them. There is a provision to provide fines. We fine people for their grasping too long. We fine them for all kinds of things, for being on, in West Urbana too many days in a row. And we certainly could fine them for discriminating against people based on fair housing laws. So I would strongly encourage, we will be speaking to the Human Relations Commission, we were supposed to meet with them yesterday, they said there were too many things on the docket, and so we will try to meet with them in July, I think is what, Trinity will come down from Chicago and meet with them in July. And we'd really like to see some level of local enforcement beyond mediation. And I think mediation is important. It's what Hope does, it's what Carla Boyd does. We like to start with mediation, it's a good approach. But I think that when you see, there are landlords in this community who have been mediated many times, and they continue to violate and just assume it's going to go to mediation, and those are good candidates to receive some kind of sanction. And I think the sanction should look, you should look at your fine structure and see what do you think is an appropriate fine for a violation, perhaps a repeated violation, because that's usually what it is, in fair housing? And look and see what you're fining people for other kinds of things, trash left out and parking tickets and all of that, and figure out what you think it would be worth. And I would encourage you to set a fine that would send a message to landlords who are repeat offenders on this issue. That is how things stop in this community, and that is what I think is appropriate at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trinity. Would you like the chair back?
Yes, I would like the chair back.
Okay, it's all yours.
We'll move on to committee to verify bills.
Thank you, Trinity.
Yeah, thank you.
And Trinity, you're welcome to stay, or you can leave, I know you have other things, so you feel free, either way. So this last month, we had forty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents in town fund expenditures. We had a hundred and eighty thousand, sixty-two dollars and eleven cents in general assistance expenditures. Our total expenditures for the month were two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-eight cents. And I will just say that when I, I just passed my seven-year anniversary, which was surprising to me, and I looked back and I saw how much assistance dollars were going out per year, it was ninety-six dollars for the entire year. Last month, it was two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and three, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars. So I am proud of our team. And I will, I'm happy to answer any questions about the bills, and I will give a brief report about the supervisor's memo.
Mary Alice.
I had two questions, I'm looking for the other one. What does E T H stand for?
Emergency Transitional Housing.
Okay, all right.
And it is our biggest grant with IDHS, five hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant.
And then my second question, which I cannot seem to find at the moment, had to do with kind of, there was a category like other expenses, and there was two large amounts that I just did not recognize, but I can't seem to find it. I can ask you as a follow-up later.
There's a miscellaneous expenses, but there was only a hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-two dollars.
This was in the thousands. A little over, I think a little over a thousand. That's okay, I can follow up with you later.
Okay, yeah, if you send it to me, I can have our finance director respond to you.
All right, thank you.
Sandra.
I was looking, it says eight temporarily exempt from work requirements. What would be the reason why?
We actually have a lot of folks who are either having surgery or about to have surgery, so, or they are about to give birth, or they just recently gave birth. So the eight who are temporarily exempt or not, they don't have a disabling condition that appears to be long-term, such that they would be on the social security track, but they're not able to do service hours at Salt and Light because of a temporary medical issue.
I understand, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the town fund and general assistance fund?
So moved.
Second. Grace, okay. Those in favor, all right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. Courts of officers.
Great, I just have a couple of things I wanted to mention. But first, I just wanted to thank the mayor for the volunteer, the number of volunteer hours through, not sure what the name is, it's the mayor's, help me out here.
Recognition program?
The mayor's recognition program. We rely heavily on volunteers in our program, and a lot of our partners rely on volunteers, especially our nonprofit volunteers, and so it was really heartening to see, it was over a hundred thousand dollar, a hundred thousand hours of volunteer service. So I just think that is really remarkable for a community our size, and it's really nice to see high school students participating in volunteer work. So I wanted to thank you for that. The spotlight that I had in the supervisor's memo is the digital inclusion campaign. We, and I have photos, like, with their permission, I have shared photos of some of the graduates. These are Township participants, current and past, who went through a pretty intensive process of learning digital navigation. The trainers received laptops, and the trainees received certification. And we're really excited, we'll be meeting with them in the next couple of weeks to talk about how they could support our office in digital navigation. It's very time-consuming to help people apply for assistance, there's a lot of, a lot of hand-holding that's needed at times, and so we've launched this program to help support that. So I'm very excited about that. That is done in concert with the Community Data Clinic, and I put some history of our work with them. We've done quite a bit, and I don't know even how much I've reported on it, so I put it all in one place with our various comments. I am, there is a broadband-ready grant coming down the line, and we're looking to potentially reach out and bring some broadband access dollars in, and I think we have a really solid foundation that we build with the Community Data Clinic to do that. I want to note, basically, the moral of the story is that all assistance requests are up. Rental assistance applications went from twenty-two to fifty-five. Food went up by twenty-point-four percent increase. Our free plot program, which is our garden program, I was told when we started this that it was really hard for the park districts to find people to garden. We have fifty-three plots that are going to be full by end of next week. It's all folks who have Linker SNAP or are immigrant households, that's the qualifications. And we have plots at Martin Center, at Meadowbrook, and Victory Park at Wood Street, which is owned by the city but leased to the Township. We, it's, we are building more, we actually needed to build raised beds at Wood Street because we couldn't accommodate all the requests. So it's a really great news story that we've had so, I was actually surprised, because when we had fifty-three plots, I thought, we're not going to fill it, but that's fine, we can offer, and we did fill it. So I just, I just want to share that there is a lot of enthusiasm for gardening and growing our own food. Solagradia provides the technical assistance to support people in how to grow the food, and we're providing, you know, tools and seeds and seedlings, and we're having these kind of like, um, community events that are trilingual, so we have Spanish and French interpreters, along with them being in English, and all of our orientations are in Spanish, French, and English, unless there's not that language group represented, but almost all of the, so, we're, oh, Orchard Downs is the other place, we have Orchard, there were quite a few folks who wanted to garden at Orchard Downs, and we just had an orientation in Spanish, French, and English, which is hard to organize, but we did it. So, so anyway, I wanted to let folks know that that is, that's taking off, and we hope to see a lot more food grown this year. I think that's it, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I would say we've just been extremely busy. Oh, I will mention, we have a lot of, for the first time in a while, we have literally homeless families and very medically fragile and vulnerable individuals, unsheltered, like, fully unsheltered, not couch-serving, and it has been difficult to find shelter options for them. Danville Shelter closed, and so Strides is actually experiencing a lot more of a pinch. I would, I just want to point us to some significant concerns going into the heat of the summer. I'm really concerned about the number of people outside. What we've been able to do is, because we had some grant savings from the beginning of the year, it took us a while to ramp up to the number of units. I've been meeting with our team, and we're going to go ahead and take the folks who qualify for our program, who've been sitting on our waitlist, and we are going to house them. So we're not taking new folks, just for anyone who's listening, but we are taking the folks that we have actively worked with, who are outside, they're in storage units, they're in U-Hauls, they're in cars, and we are going to move them into housing, and we have a plan to do that over the next week. And so that will be a temporary expansion of housing. We're hoping that this is a, a moment in time, because we haven't, I would say, there were, if you remember, there was a time period, two Augusts ago, where we had a very large number of homeless families, and I kind of rang the bells at that time, and Art PC did some expansion, and we did some expansion, and I think OSF did some expansion, and we were able to accommodate, and I just, I feel like this is one of those times. So we are, we're doing what we can to accommodate, we will be able to do it within the budget, I'm not concerned about that, and I basically reallocated some of our street outreach staff to be able to do street out, like, do the same work that they're doing, but do it in hotel rooms, so. That's all I wanted to share. It's, it's not an easy time at Township right now.
Just a slight correction, I would love to have had a hundred thousand volunteer hours, it was actually ten thousand volunteer hours, but a hundred kids, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that gets, that's, that sums up my memory at this point, but thank you.
We're getting there. Any unfinished business? All right. Under new business, we have a meeting within this meeting of the decennial committee. Pardon?
There's resolution number T dash twenty-two-four dash zero-five dash zero-two-R.
I don't have that on my agenda.
Oh, it's a, from last week, it did not exist, it's a lease agreement.
Gotcha, okay. So it's resolution number T twenty-two-four dash zero-five dash zero-zero-two-R, which is a resolution authorizing the Township Supervisor to execute a lease agreement with the New Lincoln Square LLC for use as space for the Township Assessor, July first, twenty-two-four to December thirty-first, twenty-two-four.
The short version is, we're hoping to have a clearer sense of where our permanent home was. We've expanded into the Beckett Law Office on a rental basis, and that is working well for us, and we're pursuing several options at this time. So this is appropriate for us to go ahead and do an extension, because their lease will end at the end of June.
Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution number T dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-five dash zero-zero-two-R, a resolution authorizing the Township Supervisor to execute a lease agreement with the New Lincoln Square LLC for use as a space for Township Assessor, beginning July one, twenty-two-four, till December thirty-first, twenty-two-four.
Second.
Moved by Shandra, seconded by Sharice. Discussion. James.
Just a quick question. Excuse me, I think the last time we talked about this, the, there was a sense that Lincoln Square had other plans, and they were kind of interested, kind of pushing to get us to commit, is that pressure still on?
Lincoln Square, for us to commit to Lincoln Square?
Yes.
For Supervisor's office?
Yeah, no, for, for Assessor's office.
No, I, I'm not aware of that. I think they're pleased that, they understand that this is temporary, and they're pleased that we are extending.
Okay, thank you.
And it provides the Assessor some stability. If we move, there will be a period of overlap, and so I think it's appropriate to go through December, I'm hoping that we will not have to extend further, but. All right, time will tell.
Thank you.
Mary Alice.
Just as a point of information, it looks like this has not raised, the rent hasn't raised in quite a while, so we're not, we're extending it, but it's the same amount.
Yep.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. Now we'll move to item B, which is the decennial committee. I'd like to call the meeting of the decennial committee to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colasetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Carol Elliott. Michelle Jett. Danielle Chenoweth.
President.
Ivana Owana.
Next item on this committee meeting is public input. If anyone wishes to address the decennial committee, please step up to the microphone. Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the Champaign County Township's comprehensive report and recommendations for delivery to the Champaign County Executive and Board. Do we have a presentation on this?
So Ethan Garcia has been with us also for almost a year, is that correct? Okay, we got lucky. He also just graduated from, with his master's degree in urban and regional planning, so congratulations, Ethan. We had two graduates recently, very exciting. He has been, I asked him if he would be interested in doing what I would consider a pretty nerdy project, which is to study all of the townships in the county, and he was up for the task. And I explained that he might get yelled at by supervisors throughout the Township, and he said he was up to the task. Actually, it didn't happen very often, but we, because we had so much time to work on this, frankly, I think that we've been very gentle with the townships, understanding that many of them are part-time, and Ethan will go over the process, but it's been many months of reaching out and gently encouraging people to provide information, and then after about four or five months of that, foying the information, and we were able to get all of the townships to respond, but one, which is pretty great, so twenty-nine townships responded. You have seen this report in its initial form, and were able to give feedback, it has changed. It has changed, especially the, we didn't really have recommendations nailed down. We kinda wanted to show you what we had last time, and so this time we have some specific recommendations. And we spent the time between the last meeting and this meeting, Ethan really dived into the financial reports that we received from the county clerk's office. So there is, uh, you can actually go into the folder, it's public information, but go into the folder and see all of those reports. I think Darcy helped to get access to some of that, and actually, just want to acknowledge that the first township report was actually done by Darcy when she was in our office, so we learned a lot from that process. So you'll see in this report some deeper dive in terms of the financial pieces, and it is interesting. I will put it that, I will, I will not give away the, the punchline, but I'd like to invite Ethan to present his work, and then happy to take any questions. What we're looking for is a recommendation to send this to the county. We'd like to present it to the county board and the county executive. I've let them know that it's coming, so it just, and, you know, you're the decennial committee, so you might have additional recommendations or changes you'd like to see. That's why it says draft, because it's a draft until you've confirmed it. So feel free if there are things that you think that we should, um, uh, mention when we talk to the county, we would like your input on it, and this includes Carol. Carol, since you don't have a microphone, you're certainly welcome to come sit either here or here, if that is a little bit easier, so that you can participate in the conversation. So you don't have to yell, exactly, so.
People can hear you at home.
Whatever you prefer, whether it is at the public input or here at the, with the Then I just wanna thank Carol Elliott for her service on the, um, she shared a couple of ideas and thoughts with us, and she is the former supervisor in the position, and I certainly learned things from when I was a trustee, and she was the supervisor, so thank you for your service.
Thank you for having me again. I'm sort of running just on Dayquil and caffeine, so please bear with me if I see, if I take a minute to go through things, but I'm gonna quickly go through the background again, because I think we have a couple of new faces who weren't here last time. And so obviously you guys know the project background, and the whole reason we have the decennial committee is because of Public Act one-oh-two, ten-eighty-eight, and through that, we wanted to help townships establish, uh, some goals countywide to aid in collaboration and further programming for all residents in the county. At least that was our goal through, um, the decennial committee. And so our overarching goals included serving, uh, all the townships in the county, publishing this information online so that any resident in the counties, or the township themselves can review it, comparing data and trends, and making recommendations, one directly to township and overall for the county. So the decennial committee was created in June of twenty-twenty-three, and since then, I was brought in in October, and I did my initial, um, pitch to you guys back in November, and since then I got right into the outreach that Danielle was speaking about, um, which was, uh, interesting. It was definitely hard to get, um, people to respond, because most people just ignored my emails, or did not answer the phone, because they didn't, there was not a very public phone number available to me online when I did my research, or they just weren't answering. And I, some of them I was able to leave messages, and others I couldn't, and I barely got called back. As you can see, the mailed survey, I only got seven responses, and then the online version, which I made for a bit easier, so people didn't have to go out of the way to like mail it. If that was an issue, I only got one response to that. And so after taking more time to confirm emails and phone numbers by reaching out to the county board to see information they had, or just going back with Danielle and other colleagues that might have information on township contacts, I was then foying the township that still hadn't replied. I gave them another chance, where I emailed everyone one, one last time with these updated emails and updated phone calls, with updated numbers, and they still didn't reply. And so since then, we've had a couple more people respond since the last time I presented to you in March, and we've kind of been, uh, going toward whatever our final presentation of all this information's gonna be, because that's kind of why we're here, that we want the clearest vision of what you guys think would be most efficient to, one, help residents and help the, um, townships countywide, because everyone has different needs and preferences for how they wanna access data and resources. This is again just general background on what a township is, where everywhere except Chicago has one, and they're mandated by the state to provide general assistance, uh, assessment of real property for the basis of taxation, and maintaining roads and bridges that are outside of city jurisdictions. And so the big overarching one that every township has to do, because Cunningham doesn't have to do, um, roads and bridges, because we're, uh, within cities that do that for us, and we are a little bit lucky in that front, but a bunch of the other townships in the county do have to handle those services, so we did take that into account when analyzing their, um, general assistance programs, because we understand they have other things they have to do. This is just a map of all the townships. And we really wanted to stress that poverty, rent burden, and disability, and people with disabilities are a county-wide phenomenon, if you wanna call that, or an issue, because I think a big common argument we see for why, uh, other townships feel like they are, don't have to go to the office every day, or they don't have to try harder, quote-unquote, to promote their services, because they think that they're not as big as like Cunningham or Urbana or City of Champagne, and that these needs aren't as needed, because they have much smaller populations, and not as much of an influx of people in and out. So they don't see poverty, rent burden, and disability as pressing as an issue, but when you look at the stats, such as that forty, forty-seven percent of county, uh, household are renters, which is countywide, not just within Urbana and Champagne, uh, it's, it's a bit telling where these issues breach beyond the city limits of Urbana and Champagne, which, again, the narrative is often that these townships don't feel like these issues are relevant to them, but they are. Um, and these are just a bit more, uh, of the stats that we found, that all public information from, uh, the Champagne County Mental Health Board, the National Low Income Housing Coalition, and, uh, SSI participation from the SSA website. This is a better visual of how poverty in Champagne has risen in the last twenty years, and has, again, this is countywide, this is not just for Champagne or Urbana, the cities, this is for the Champagne County. And while it was a bit dipping, we can see that there is potential for a rise, as it has risen a bit since between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-two. And again, this is to reiterate the fact, another visual to show that poverty, uh, is not just within Champagne and Urbana, they, it's within the entire county. And similarly, the amount of people that receive SSI payments, which are, um, like just, uh, people with disabilities on aid, uh, whether it's because they can't work or because they just need help in their lives, like, uh, another type of assistance through the federal government, uh, is about nine-hundred-and-forty-three a month throughout the county. And this is another map that shows that there are actually a lot of people, especially in the northern end of the county, that, that receive these benefits. And again, this is to stress that these, uh, numbers are going up as the years have gone on. The most recent data only goes to twenty-eighteen, but I think it's still relevant to, to show that there has been a twenty-one percent increase in, of residents receiving SSI in the last ten years. Again, to reiterate the importance of general assistance, general assistance is pretty often for people, uh, lashes, or because you still, we have set procedures where you have to go through the federal government and try a bunch of other, uh, GA and emergency assistance throughout before coming to us, and we still have a bunch of rules that people have to adhere, adhere to, like Danielle was saying earlier, where people typically do have to be with the job, they have to have housing usually in place already, and we are more so just an aid in that. We, when we can, we do try to house people ourselves, but we are alone, I believe, in that, in that task in township, in the county, uh, and we, oh, sorry, I got off my train of thought. And we have been, sorry, I really lost my train of thought, sorry. Okay. Uh, GA and EA are, I guess, the distinction between them is GA typically is for, um, housing. I'm sorry, I really lost my train of thought, give me a second, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
And the difference between GA and EA is GA is required by state law, and it's income support, um, whether that be through cash, like we do, or vouchers, which some other townships do. Emergency assistance is optional, and that really is what covers our rental assistance. Could also be utility assistance or other forms of assistance, and it's encouraged at the level of the township, but it's not required. But it's very clearly defined that townships that say have surpluses, and we'll see that in a minute when we get to the financials, is very clearly, uh, the case that, you know, they could participate in emergency assistance if they're interested in using their surplus in that way.
Yeah, and the last point here is that every township does collect GA, um, uh, budgets for taxes that go toward, that are supposed to be going toward GA services, so that is another issue that, again, that state mandate, and when I looked at the financial, which I'll go into a bit more, most townships do have those, even if the budgets are not being used. And then this was information we got directly from the executive director of the township, Officials of Illinois, where that if a township is found to be withholding, uh, funds or not making these services accessible, there can be a lawsuit filed, which we're not sure we're gonna do that, but that is an option, whether from us or from residents. And then this is an overall summary, and there's, it is mostly the same from when I presented back in March, except that Ogden has since reached out, Ogden Township, and Philo has, did not complete the survey, but they did, uh, reach out to Danielle personally and ask, uh, for support in administering their GA services. Um, and Hardwood is a township that still has not replied at all, so we're not sure what they're doing. Um, but overall, from what we found, which is still relevant for Hardwood, because we cannot find this information online for them, uh, there are five, um, townships with websites, there are eight township with consistent, uh, set office hours, which typically goes in hand, but I don't think more than eight have an actual office. A lot of the townships tend to meet out of the supervisor's house. So when I was asking for an address that I could potentially give to their, um, constituent that need aid, the supervisor tended to say, don't give out my address, which makes sense, but it also makes the process difficult, because if people don't have access to the internet or other, a phone, it's kind of hard to find these services. But at least we get a lot of walk-ins all the time at Cunningham, so I'm sure that would be necessary throughout the county. And then, uh, there were seventeen townships that provided zero assistance last year, based on the numbers we saw online, or they told us straight, straightforward that they didn't have any clients last year, um, and foreclaimed not to operate GA, which include Conduit, Hensley, Newcombe, and Stanton, which is illegal, as I said earlier. And then we, uh, this links to other data, which you, you should all have this in your email if you wanna delve deeper into the, the spreadsheet of the, or the GA applications. We did ask for the township to send a copy of their application, not all of them did, which is another issue we had with the survey, that a lot of townships took it upon themselves to answer only the question they wanted to answer, which made this a bit difficult. We gotta go out of our way, especially for the financial, both of them just said, the information's online, look at it yourself, so that's what I did. And yeah. So this is, again, going deeper into the results, these are the amount of clients, not including Cunningham, which is CTSO, or the City of Champagne Township, COCT. And Tolono says they have seventy-seven clients, which is the most out of all the other townships, not including CTSO and COCT, but as I'll go into a bit later, there is a bit of discrepancies in that number. These, I can't support any of these numbers, because this is not public information, these are all the numbers they directly gave me, so I can't necessarily verify if any of these numbers are real, but these are all explicit numbers that we got from the townships, that we have evidence of, that they, this is what they claimed the amount of clients they served last year, which obviously these are very low numbers, and I'll go into CTSOs and COCT's numbers later. And this, uh, is going over a bunch of the budgets, uh, information that we found. We really wanted to single out, uh, the budgets they have, um, planned in their, in their annual budget, the amount of tax levies they collect from their, uh, taxpayers, the beginning balance, because we also wanna make note of the amount of, well, while wealth hoarding, essentially, that the township do, because, yeah, I know Danielle, I've been to me, I'm pretty sure there is also a law that says the amount of, uh, budget you're allowed to keep. You can't necessarily just keep your budgets every year forever, that's not how, uh, government budgets work. And there is their budgets for personnel, which a lot of them still have budgets for personnel, even though they have no clients, which is very interesting. And then again, the budget they have specifically allocated for direct assistance, which some have zero. These are all the, uh, the township that said they have assistance, but then they didn't spend any on, on their GA services, because they didn't have clients. And then these are the township that, uh, we, that they did not, they said they didn't have any, uh, who knows?
Yeah.
Yes, no assistance, yes.
This is the no assistance.
Yes.
We started with the good news, and then we went to the bad.
Yes. These are the township with no assistance, according to them, or just not finding them having to have clients or budgets allocated for it, which, if you look at the, uh, budget direct assistance, you can see there's a lot of zeros there, and a lot of them still collect levies for it, even though there are also some that don't do that, which, again, is illegal, because that's one of their three mandated, um, responsibilities. And then these are the cases we have for CTSO, COCT, and then the Champagne Regional Planning Commission, who all operate through the Consitorium, which is a service that aids in providing rental assistance, which is open countywide, which is, we'll go later, that's whenever a recommendation that, um, township that want, uh, help in providing their services, which was a question we asked in our survey, in our survey too, which a lot said no, they didn't want help, even though they don't have any active clients or any promotion of their services, so that was a bit interesting. And again, this is also service that if they don't wanna collaborate with each other, this is an external entity that could help with that, that we, um, utilize. And as you can see, we're the, the three, uh, town, or assistance providing, uh, entities that provide the most clients. And I think COCT has the most, has the most, yes. Uh, again, then this is just the overall services that all the townships provide, again, Cunningham is a bit lucky that we don't have to provide some of the road management or cemetery management that these other townships, um, provide, even though they, at least for the cemetery and these other social services, they're technically not, they don't have to provide them, but we understand if it's a community need, they, they do what their community wants, but we still wanna stress that despite that, they still have to be able to provide all the GA services, that a lot of them start collecting levies for, and they're just sitting in a bank account, not going anywhere. And again, we wanted to stress that we are a township that has a lot of collaboration with external entities to help us with their various services. As Danielle was going through earlier, all the, the people we partner with, one of which is a Consitorium. And so then our biggest remaining question is, of course, Hardwood, as they didn't reply to us whatsoever, we have not heard from them at all. The multi-township between Condit, uh, Newcombe, and Stanton, they, they all claim to not have a GA program, but East Bend, which is a part of this multi-township, says they do, so there's a bit of a contradiction there. Um, and then Tolono, Mohammed, Rancho, and Urbana, there are a bit of discrepancies in their annual taxes, the amount of budget spent on services, uh, their beginning balances, and the number of clients they have. I won't go into the specifics of them, because we don't really wanna, like, single out, um, townships, but there are just some interesting discrepancies when you look at all the numbers, where it doesn't seem like the budgets are being used in the way that they're saying, especially when there are no clients. What are the services being, what are the administrative services doing if there's no And then this is just the data, if you went in your email, if you wanna delve deeper into the spreadsheet that we have. Danielle, I think cleaned it up for you guys, so it looked nice. I kinda had a mess, sorry. And then overall, the thirty townships are minus two, seven million and four-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-four-hundred dollars in budgets allocated to GA, according to the, uh, F, uh, fiscal year twenty, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget reports, and then there are more than eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand spent on admin personnel, uh, countywide, which, again, for some of the counties that don't have clients, we just, I don't want a bit more clarity what their day-to-day routine might look like if they don't have clients, or if they don't even have an office, how does that work? Or an open phone call, or an open phone number. And then collectively, all thirty townships have spent about a million of, a million and five-hundred-thousand on direct assistance. on direct assistance. And then this is where we want the newest part of this presentation, is the recommendations. We definitely, we are going to share this to the other, to the county officials one and to all the other supervisors and state representatives, Senator Ferrachi, the township officials of Illinois. And we want this report to be accessible online to the public as well, because we think that this is all relevant information and people should know what their township does and doesn't do, because we can only hold them accountable so much because this is mostly all public information or information they willingly gave us, so there's not necessarily foul play happening. We are just sharing information that was told to us, which was a part of the participation of the survey. We indicated that this information would be shared. Where so far, the only thing that, again, was told to me was addresses and phone numbers that supervisors didn't want shared, which is of course, okay. And then we want to, we want to address that GA needs to be provided in every township, especially for the townships that say they don't have one or for the township that are not collecting levies for them, because again, that is mandated by the law. And what other programs people have going on in their township, they still need to include GA, especially when there are being taxes collected by it that your residents are paying for. And then we, and we think that township would best utilize these services and potentially collaborate with each other, whether it's forming another multi township, as is, as Conduit, the Condit and Newcombe example had. Or we think that we might need to even FOIA these townships again, because there's a bunch of information that, again, they didn't respond to, especially for the, the township that were responding to my FOIA. They did not, they still left some questions blank, or they just did not answer it, they did not fulfill our request, or they've tried to point us to online services that didn't provide clear clarity on things, especially in terms of clients and their financials. This is more recommendations where we think that the residents who are unable to apply for assistance, which again, we're going to, this is something that we want to promote in our final version of this report, where we want people to know that if they do, if they are unable to receive services, that they should appeal to the Public AIDS Appeal Committee, which should be a proactive service to kind of hold these townships accountable. Again, we can only do so much as an external township, but residents do have a lot of power in holding their township accountable. And I think there needs to be a better way to acknowledge and collect data on if there are a bunch of people who are looking for these services and they're not provided. We're not sure how to do that, but that's one of our ideas. And we think the, the Champaign County Rental Assistance Consitorium should reach out directly to all the supervisors of these townships to invite them. Even though we already recommended that these townships should do that, and most of them still said no, we still think that that's a resource they should utilize. And then we think that Champaign County should play a role in educating the public. Again, through this report, we want all this information to be public and we need it to be in an accessible way for everyone, especially in the more rural townships. We want to ensure that they're both online and physical copies for people in case there is no, and again, if there are people who are homeless, who don't have access to the internet, how are they going to know this information? And again, we want to reiterate that we do want an online presence for all these townships. We think the baseline that they should have is a website, an active phone number that residents can call at specific set hours. And even if they can allocate it, an office space or a meeting place, whether it's their local city hall or township hall, that is open for the public to come in for walk-ins if that is needed. Because again, we think, based on our own township, all these services are only, I think so utilized because we have an open door policy. We have very present online, we're very present online and we promote our services at a bunch of local events as well. And we think that every township should take their, their resources and better utilize them to better promote themselves and actually adhere to the set hours and services that they're supposed to provide.
Can I ask a question? Is it sun?
Yeah.
When you were doing this, did you get information about the population of the individual townships? I ask that because I know that for the really, some of the rural areas, there might not be a lot of people who would be eligible for general assistance. Just growing up in a farming community, you know, there might be one or two houses or something within the township. The other question I had, or would like to point out, that if a township had a zero amount in their levy, they won't be able to up that levy at all because of the tax caps that were in effect in, was it 96 or before that? But because you can't increase by a percentage of zero, so there would be some suggestions to help them figure out what to do if they did want to spend more GA money. Or if it wasn't quite at zero, it would be tough for them to increase it exponentially each levy year.
To answer your first question, I didn't mention it, but I do have population information that we just directly pulled from the census. It is on our spreadsheet, if you go into one of the links we have in the later slides. But, and I think, again, going back to the point about that, these services are supposed to be provided no matter what, even if the township somehow does not have people that need it for whatever reason, which frankly, I feel like there probably is one, people that probably need it eventually. And the whole point is that these services need to already be established. It shouldn't be a scramble to allocate the funds to figure out how to do GA, because it seems like these townships that don't have personnel dedicated toward it don't know how to even execute their GA services. And we want to ensure that there is actual validation in that there is no one who's looking for these services, because since there's no way to contact these townships, there's basically no way to prove that no one's looking for these services. So I think, and again, there are a bunch of the more prominent townships, like Urbana and Rancho, that we know there are people that want these services, because we get calls from them all the time that they want them. And we still, and even though we have specific townships that we know there are these people, we can't say that there aren't in certain townships. And we need to universally hold all the townships accountable, because we also don't want to single out certain townships and say they have to do more because they're a bigger township or they're more likely to have people financially struggling, because we can't prove that.
I understand that, just passing along some info.
I'm not, for the tax levy, I'm not exactly sure about that, because I'm not, I'm not sure how you would amend that. And I, I think I say that in our communication, we're not exactly sure how to address. I mean, Danielle have talked about that. And by either way, like I said, it's still state mandated. I think there's a very one specific loophole you can get out of it, and that is essentially passing a bill. And as far as we know, there is no bill that exists that says that either these funds can be transferred to something else or that these funds don't need to exist at all. Which typically, I think, from what I saw at the Illinois Law, the most common thing is reallocating those funds, that you have to do that with legislation. And none of these townships said they've done that.
Yeah, but Champaign was sued because they zeroed out their levy and they were sued through a class action suit with Land of Lincoln and they were required to increase their levy. So that would be, I don't know what the, I'm not a lawyer, so I think we were, we're providing this to the township officials of Illinois who have lawyers and they may want to provide some guidance on that.
I think, Grace, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. On one of your slides, maybe a little more in forward progression, is there, it talks about the money, about $7.4 million. Yes, this one. Okay, in budgets. And just looking at that, does that mean that there's like $5 million missing between what's budgeted and what's allocated here?
I, I think the budgets include all their administration as well. It's just the overall, like, it's set for, it's their GA town fund essentially, and this is, the 1 million is like directly spent on aid directly.
Yeah, but then adding that 800,000 sum for admin and personnel still gives about $5 million short of that 7.4.
I, I, again, I believe that a lot of these are, their held budgets as well are included. A lot of them have like 200, 300 plus thousand dollars that are just sitting in their bank accounts. And again, me and Danielle haven't delved into it too deeply, but we're pretty sure that is also illegal.
Okay, so just sitting there, kind of building up, rolling over.
Yes.
Mary Alice, and then James.
Thank you very much for putting this together, it's very interesting. I was wondering, you said 28 of the townships out of the 30 do highway in their budget, right? And so that's basically everybody but Champaign and Cunningham.
City of Champaign, yes.
Okay.
Because we have City of Champaign and then Champaign Township.
It is very confusing. We have Urbana Township as well, but we have Cunningham. So my question is, did you look to see, and I just started going through some of the budget stuff here, what proportion do the other townships spend specifically on highway?
Again, that was also a discrepancy I was finding too, is that there are a lot of, a lot of the way I came up with that 28 township technically do have some sort of involvement with road and highway, because they do have a highway commissioner. But I, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'm pretty sure there were a couple that don't necessarily have a budget in place or like specific tasks they have to do besides review and like admin. So I think that is also something I could elaborate more on in my research.
So when we looked at the, the budget for the different townships, and there's a note on Cunningham that says it includes grants, I'm assuming that the rest, if they had grants, would also be in that amount?
Yeah, can I, and so the town fund is where all of the highway and bricks and mortar would be under the town fund. And most of, when you look at the financial analysis, my request was just to analyze the general assistance budget. So we were looking at, now the personnel admin budget may cross, because some folks will, so that's the one I want to indicate, and this responds a little bit to like why it doesn't add up. It's, we wanted to kind of give you a sense of what the direct assistance amount was, what the overall, which is all general assistance, what personnel is, which sometimes bridges between town fund and GA, and then the general assistance budget. But the, we did not analyze the town fund budgets because we're looking at assistance for the poor as the focus of this research.
I think you answered this question, as you've been answering other questions. It sounds to me like the only way to enforce compliance with the law is to have a lawsuit of some kind, is that? Or it can something be done at the state level without a lawsuit?
So the recommendation that we had was that the, that we'll be presenting to the, our representative and senator is to basically have some level of sanction around the non-provision of general assistance. So is the last bullet point in the, so I think that there's pressure, which is, I think, yeah, I would just call it common sense, like, hey, you're bringing in money for a thing, but you're not spending it on the thing. And so the public should be informed and they can do something about it because they're the voters, right? I mean, that happened between the last supervisor and here. The supervisor cut the rolls from 175 people to 26 in four years, which is unprecedented since the, I mean, we had lower assistance rates than the early 80s. So there was a change in leadership. So I think the voters can make a decision about whether or not they want to have a change in leadership, but they need information to be able to do that. They may not have time and to look at it. So I think there's, you know, this is, it's a democratic process. People can choose a change in leadership. They can, the public can be aware of it and that leadership can make a different choice about how they're managing funds. They can be sued by a resident and the county or one of the larger townships could provide assistance for that, or the Land of Lincoln could provide assistance. I have spoken to, I have spoken with township supervisors in the metro area who have dealt with similar issues where surrounding, they are dealing with the pressure of so many townships not providing assistance and everyone's coming to them. And that's where this came from, is actually, the one slide we didn't finish, but I want to add, is our referrals. So we're not done pulling the data, but we have collected referrals to other townships. And it's a large number of town folks who have come to us. And it impacts our, it takes our, a lot of time for us to provide those referrals and then people come back to us to say they're not hearing from it. I can share multiple voicemails with you, you know, where they go round and around. And so it's taking up a lot of our time and it has an impact on our township when other townships don't do that work. So other supervisors in the metro area have elected to initiate legal enforcement because it is an impact on their township that those townships are not doing what they're supposed to do.
And again, like, we kind of had to pull an arm and a leg to get these contacts, so I can imagine that a lot of these residents, they don't have this information. And I did compile the, the shareable phone numbers and addresses I do have that we, I assume is what we're giving to residents, but even then, it's not for every township, because not every township has replied or provided a number or an email or an address.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sharice. Oh, I'm sorry, James. Took a while.
All right, so I've got a couple of things I want to check out about this. The law, it requires that all townships do this, right? So all of these 30 townships in the county should be going through a process like this, but we're pretty sure they are not, right?
You mean the disentile process?
The disentile process, right? And the intent of that, I, I can't say what the intent was, but having spent a lot of time on the county board, my impression was the intent, based on where this came from, was potentially to support the reduction of number of units of government in the state, just because of when it came about and who pushed it. That's just how, how it seems to me. So I'm, I'm going to suggest something fairly radical, which is a recommendation that instead of trying to go down the path of making each of these small townships behave in a certain way, that the state give the county the opportunity to administrate any township that fails to act on their requirements. And so townships that are not functioning, not doing what they need to do, whether it is in this area, which we focused on, which was general assistance, or we can't ignore the road responsibilities that go along with the township. If you've worked with, on the county level, you know that that's probably the, the sticking point for a lot of the rural individuals who are concerned about township. Now, I will tell you, from my experience, each of those townships have a widely varying capacity and capability to actually deal with the road requirements that they need to manage and they frequently depend on the county to deal with any road problems that are, that are greater than just rechipping it. If it involves replacing a bridge, they come to the county and ask the county to provide a large part of it. But I think, from what I've seen here, the recommendation should be that this capability needs to be aggregated on the county level for those townships that are not meeting the requirements of, of their responsibilities. And I say it specifically that way because we do have townships, at least two, that are functioning well in our county and, and they don't need that kind of pressure or change. But this is, this would be more efficient government, more service to more people. If this was, I would assume that the county would lean on something like the Regional Planning Commission to implement something like that. That, that's the direction I would like to see this recommendation come from. And, and maybe, I don't think anybody is expecting this, maybe a couple of people are expecting this, but we have gone beyond what the vision of this law was. We've taken it a step further. We've said, "We're not only looking at what we do, but we're looking at how the system works in general in our surrounding area." And why are we doing that? We're doing that because of the slide we don't have, which is the number of people that come to us for these kinds of services because they don't get it in their, from their, from their township. And, and we have a functioning township. And City of Champaign has a functioning township. I, I worry for something like Vermillion County, which probably has similar, a similar issue, if not worse than what we have. And if you think about the state, 102 counties, and how many townships that means in each of those counties, this is something the state needs to address broadly. And, and it's not just, you know, some recommendations about how to pursue bringing lawsuits against individual townships. It has to be about a movement to a functional organization that helps the money that's been collected to help people and pave roads and, and take care of township-level responsibilities get done.
Point of process? I'm just wondering if... Point of process, I'm just wondering if, uh, what I hear is two motions, so I just want to, like, maybe we can move towards some action. Uh, I'm action-oriented. So the first is, we just had this general sanctions for townships that do not provide general assistance. What I'm hearing is that you're proposing that, um, for, um, that, um, you're recommending that the state give the county the opportunity to administrate or, or request the counties administrate any township that fails to act on its requirements? Um, that's the first one I'm heard. And then the second one is that, and I, I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to name that, um, we had forty-seven referrals. Um, when I went in to upgrade the slide, I realized that we were missing a bunch of data, and the right hand wasn't talking to the left. Um, but I had our assistance manager updated it, and I will check with her to make sure. But we have, in two years, forty-seven referrals to townships. Um, I will confirm that, but I, what I hear is a motion to add a slide that looks at the referrals, um, and that, that focuses on the data around that.
Yeah, and that, and that's about, why did we go a step beyond what the decennial kind of requirement is? Which is to kind of examine yourself and why you exist and make sure you're efficient? You know, we went a step further, because we're seeing this data that says this isn't working in the areas around us.
Okay, are there any other technical questions for Ethan or Danielle before we move on to, um, considering approval and amending this? Grace.
Um, we talked about a final version in slides, and could you remind me, is this our last final thing here? Because also discrepancies in what we had in our packet versus what's on the screen and things we might add. So I'm just trying to understand what final version we're talking about.
The final version, which should have been in the packet for this, for today, is this version that you're seeing? Like, we haven't changed it since?
Um, I don't, I didn't see some of these. Yeah, no, there's differences, like the budget on GA expenditures.
Yeah, that's the first version.
Graph versus another thing.
That's the first version. The second version I sent directly to you all.
Oh, okay. Because this was the one in the packet for today.
Oh, that is perhaps a, yes.
Okay, so you're saying the one that was presented here on the slides?
And I'd have to look, that may be my fault, and not the clerk's fault, I'd have to check, because I think I, I only sent her, um, the lease. Um, but I had sent you all directly the, um, like, the presentation before the rescheduled meeting. So the version that you saw today, we went through all of the slides of it, that is the version. It has some technical corrections. It also visualizes the data in a way that I think is easier to see. Those are really the two changes.
Okay, I did really like the graphs in the other version, I think. Just was very nice visual.
Chris, or Darcy, go ahead.
So I had two things. Um, one, on the first page of your recommendations, uh, you said the circuit clerk, um, I deal with these phone calls all the time, it's actually the county clerk, because the county clerk is the one that has the website, that has the financial reports, the elected official's contact information and address. The circuit clerk is in the courthouse, and they handle the schedule for all court-related things. So the FOIA should come from the county clerk.
Yeah, that's the, that's a typo. We will fix it. Champaign County.
Totally fine. I, I'm not kidding. I get calls about this every single day, because I'm the city clerk. There's three of us all in Urbana.
I totally missed that, and so I'm glad that you spotlighted it.
Uh, the other thing that I was gonna say is just like a general caution specifically relating to presenting of this to the county, um, when discussing the personnel line items of the budget. As you noted in a previous slide as well, there are other services offered beyond just general assistance and emergency assistance in the umbrella of highway that are under personnel, like the mowing of all of the road sides, um, to ensure that there's visibility at the cross-sections on county roads. That is township-paid for through personnel, so that is man-hours that are done every year. The plowing of the roads, that is also personnel. So there are other expenditures that fall under personnel that might pop up in these budgets. Um, that does not mean that they are not fully utilizing their funds. They should. But to be clear, there are other reasons that you might see those numbers in some of those townships, because they do provide services outside of what the ones that have contiguous boundaries with municipalities do.
Yeah, the personnel numbers we have there are specifically for GA admin.
In that case, they're probably not using them correctly.
Yeah, the, of the roadside, we did not pull those numbers. We pulled specifically for GA admin.
Chris, you had a question?
Quickly, um, the, the slide that says poverty in Champaign County? Yeah, that one. What's the population of Champaign County? Right. Well, how can, are you saying that nearly a hundred-and-ninety thousand people are in poverty?
Uh, did we pull this data from the Fred website? I'm not exactly sure.
Population is about two-hundred-and-ten thousand.
Yeah. I, I think that's based off the national standard. I think technically, yes.
I don't think that can be possible.
That's not correct.
Yeah. Um, you might want to look at that.
Yeah, we might review that then.
I'm, I'm thinking there's a line missing from this. This could, this could be the, the population, and we're missing the line of where the poverty level is. Because it may be below a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand. It's likely below that.
Um, I would, I would double-check the slide, Ethan.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Grace.
Um, I think that would be important to clarify then, Darcy's point about GA, uh, personnel budget admin. Uh, just because on some of the tables, it doesn't specifically say GA on there. So I think that would be helpful to just clarify on the tables there. And, um, I like the recommendations here, and I agree in part with James's point about having a holistic collaboration with the county and the state, but also think that, um, you know, I think that makes sense for down-the-road collaboration. But also, the current reality of the situation is that the townships are mandated to provide this already, not the county or the state, right? So I support, um, fostering some of the collaboration, like your recommendations here. But I also think that it's just missing the current state of reality to say that the townships aren't the ones responsible for doing this, when that is the current law and has been. So I support that collaboration, but I don't think it makes sense to, right now, just decide we're gonna change the law and responsibility and put it on the county rather than the townships at this point.
Mary Alice.
So my perspective is, at the end of the day, we want people who are qualified to get this kind of service and, um, to be able to access the funds, right? So that's, that's kind of the purpose of GA. This is a state law. We want people who need access to those funds to be able to get that. So with that in mind, uh, rather than going to all these townships and fighting them, I actually like James's idea, um, because it, it meets the goal, right? The goal is to serve the population. Um, and if it can be done county-wide, then whatever the rules are, you don't do it for two years, the county gets all the money. Whatever it is, I don't know what it is. Um, but I think it's, uh, something that we should consider.
James.
I, I will point out that this is, my suggestion is not unlike what happens, uh, with assessment, because if a township fails to do assessment, the county steps in and assists with that, because that's an obliga, it's, it's a requirement to get that done, or else we don't know how to collect money to run, run local government. So, so it's not unprecedented for the county to take care of things like road situations that are beyond what a township can do, assessment situations that are beyond what a township can do. It fits the model. Um, it's not uncommon. I, I heard this conversation a lot when I was on the county board, you know, for six years, and people raised the question of, how is township government functioning in this current state?
Okay, at this... Pardon? Darcy.
Um, I, so I agree wholeheartedly with, uh, the goal of having the money allocated for general assistance being utilized by those who need it everywhere. There is currently pending legislation at the state level, and I apologize that I don't have the number or the memory of whether it's in the House or the Senate at this time, but it was brought to our attention in the legislative update at our last, um, quarterly seminar of the Municipal Clerks of Illinois, that there is an attempt to effectively have counties dissolve townships, absorb the funds, and apply the services at a county level. My concern with that is I do not know, if they paint it with a broad brush, that there will be exceptions made for localized management to continue stuff like Cunningham Township and City of Champagne Township with individual official and individual administration, if that makes sense. I'm concerned that it'll just be one centralized thing for the entire county, and that there will be no exceptions made, even for those townships who are currently following the law and operating as intended and beyond. So that is my one concern with that, and I, I will also say that it is already somewhere in the legislature.
Jay.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate this conversation. I, I want to come back to the recommendations. And I will say too, that I want to be mindful of our role as the township board. Um, and I'm, I'm personally not sure if I feel comfortable making a recommendation related to that piece, because I do have concerns about what it might mean for our township, um, if something that broad were to happen. I, I think, you know, the recommendation, um, for townships that are unable or unwilling to comply should seek contract, to contract these services with other townships with capacity, skills, and interests. I think we could amend that to say, um, with other townships or, um, qualified providers. You know, like, we could wordsmith it a little bit, because I, I hear what's being said of, you know, if they're not gonna do it, somebody needs to, right? So whether that's forcing it through fines, whether that's someone taking over, um, you know, making a recommendation to say like, hey, let's help move the needle. But I think, at least for myself, I, I don't know, you know, I've never served on the county board. We're not acting as the county board. I have a little bit of discomfort with us saying, hey, this is something the county should do, because we have a model what it should look like, right? Um, and I think there are a number of different ways that the needle could be moved to make it so more counties are doing what they should be doing. But at least without more information, I don't personally feel comfortable making a recommendation that the county should take over those responsibilities. I think this is an incredible piece of information, and like, kudos to you for all your work on it. You know, Danielle, for all your support, everyone who was part of the committee for working on this. And I can see where someone would say, well, how does this fit into the scope of this decennial committee? But again, it, it does impact us when we're trying to say, you know, yeah, we don't know where to tell you to go, right? Like, if you can't even, and, you know, that's part of being an elected official, is your address is public information. So, um, this is great information, and like I said, I think as we review the recommendations, I just want to be mindful of, like, what does it mean to situate it in our role as the Cunningham Township Board?
Just to move things along, are there any recommendations that you don't want to see on the slide? Do you, are you, are you okay with the recommendations as written, other than the, the one that you might want to add?
Are we, I think, probably do a straw poll on any ones that we want to add. I did want to, um, I agree with some of Jay's points there. I think that they've already covered that with contract services for townships that can't meet it. And I would recommend maybe some broad language about the county clerk, uh, clerk or board work to ensure GA access throughout the county, and maybe not have such a specific kind of takeover recommendation, but just work to ensure that access. And I think we do need to do probably a straw poll, because we've got different opinions on different recommendations.
Jay.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I, I just personally would advocate for the, the one that I mentioned, like, maybe expanding out the option, so that it doesn't just have to be another township taking it over, because we also don't know the capacity of other townships to take it over. And, you know, if it was something like RPC had the ability to do so, I don't want to completely close that off. So that would be my one recommendation, but.
Point of process? Do you, a process question, actually.
So, just trying to understand, Jay, are you recommending that the third bullet point that's right there, say townships unable or willing, or it should say unwilling, to comply, should seek to contract these services with other townships, the county, or registered nonprofits?
I think that would be appropriate.
So I just wanted to understand that was the recommendation, and, and I, I would support that.
That satisfy yours, James?
Yeah, that's a step in the right direction.
Okay, all right.
Just a point of information, what's our deadline?
End of June.
Do you feel like you want to bring this back in June for final approval? With the corrections that are made? What I've written down is the poverty rate slide needs to be, um, corrected. Um, the board wants to add the slide regarding the number of referrals that the town, Cunningham Township is making. You're changing Champagne Circuit Clerk to Champaign County Clerk, and you're adding the language to that third bullet point. Are there any other suggested changes? Mary Alice?
It's not necessarily suggested change, but we need the, the current version, at least posted on our website.
Okay. So with these updates, and then put the current version on our website, and then bring this back to the June Town Board?
That's totally fine. I love talking about townships.
And meet again as the decennial committee within the Town Board meeting.
I do have one, one question that I just want, just for clarification, and you probably already answered it. So every, every township within Champaign County is supposed to be doing what we're doing right now.
Correct.
However, we're finding that every, not every township is doing this because of, um, either lack of staff or lack of funds, or both, or something to that effect? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand.
You know, as my friend Chris Evans would say, don't go to motive. I mean, I don't really know what the motive is. We can only report on what we, what they report on. Um, and I think that it's, you know, if you dive deep, we could make hypotheses. Like, in some cases, they don't bring in a tax levy. Is that even legal? Um, in some cases, Colfax has a hundred-and-sixty-nine folks. Is there someone who qualifies on it for GA? According to statistics, there'd be at least one. But, um, but you know, who knows? Maybe Colfax doesn't have that. So I think that there are just a lot of different reasons. Um, I think there's a lot of inertia around townships, and people inherit what the last person did, and they just carry that on, and they may not even necessarily be aware of or pay attention to what the rules are around general assistance, because there isn't an enforcement mechanism, um, that's really clear to them. So I think there could be a lot of different reasons. I, um, my rule of thumb is assume best intentions, and then always, and, and get accurate information, and make smart recommendations. And that's where I think we're at.
Okey-dokey. I just want to get some understanding as to if we are, when we, when we're making recommendations, are we making recommendations because we're the county seat? Are we, you know, do we even have that, are we, do we even have that, um, authority? You know what I mean? To say, oh, well, we recommend that these other townships do this. That's, that's what...
I think James spoke to this, and that, this is why I think we should include the slide, is that we have forty-seven referrals in two years, most of which involve multiple communications. Because they're referred, and they come back, and they're referred and come back. I can't exactly quantify how much staff time this ta, that takes, but I would say a lot. And so I think that's our standing, is that if other folks aren't doing their job, then it ends up being, coming back to us. And I would specifically call out Urbana Township. Urbana Township is most of what you'll see, and is, um, Urbana Township referrals, because they may have an Urbana address, and they come to us, and then we refer out. It's been very, very difficult to refer folks to Urbana Township, but it's, you know, there've been other.
And I'm, I'm, I'm going to be honest, up, up until I really saw this list, and I saw Urbana Township, and I saw, and I said, wait, wait. Is Urbana and Cunningham the same thing? And then, no, they're not. So maybe a lot of people don't even recognize that, because that, that can be confusing. Yeah, I think, onto your point, my, the only conclusion I would draw, like, that I would firmly support is that regardless of if they're doing their services, they are hard to reach to, all these townships. And if it's hard for someone, me getting paid to dedicate hours to find them, I'm sure for the average person, it's not easy to contact them.
Okay, thank you.
And that hasn't changed over the last thirty, forty years.
Well, I think we have a plan of action now, going forward. Grace, one last question.
Yeah, the last thing in the recommendations was, um, I don't know if others agree, but I do like some of the graphical depictions of the GA balance and things, um, even maybe as appendices. I think that if there's other ways to show the data, I think a table and graph can be helpful.
Sure, we can bring some of those back. So we'll bring one back. I think the mayor did a good job making a list. I made sure that it ma, our lists match. Um, we'll ask Michelle to attend. She's with the county executive's office, so it'd be helpful to have her present. And we will make sure that the final is in the packet, and my apologies for oversight with that.
Jay.
Yeah, I apologize. It's not exactly a perfect time, but I just want to recognize, like, both of the graduates. It's not exactly a perfect time, but I just want to recognize like both of the graduate students who spoke tonight coming after you've already got your degree. Like that's incredible, not only your work, but to continue to show up to help our community be better. I just really am grateful for that. So congrats and also thank you for sticking around and sorry we're pushing it to June.
No, no, thank you. It's fine. This has been a lot of my year, so I like sharing it.
Thank you. Okay, so we will adjourn this meeting of the decennial committee, and then I will adjourn the meeting of the Cunningham Township Board. Thank you very much. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you for including me in this.
Okay, I'd like to call to order this rescheduled meeting of the Urbana City Council. It's rescheduled from May 13th. Today is May 20th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next up, our approval of minutes from several previous meetings. The April 14th Committee of the Whole Minutes, April 22nd City Council Minutes, April 22nd Special Committee of the Whole Minutes, and April 29th Special City Council Minutes. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Are there any substantial corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. There are no additions to the agenda. Next item is presentations and public input. We have no scheduled presentations. Does anyone wish to address the city council rescheduled? If you do, please step forward and speak at the microphone.
I also review papers that use similar methods and things like this. So it's a huge part of my job to look at data like this, to look at reports like this and understand what's happening with them. So I've been doing that. I've talked to you a little bit about it, and I've gotten in even deeper. So I'm, because this is the rescheduled meeting, so I'll speak again later, but because this is the rescheduled meeting, I'd like to tell you what I had learned by last week, this meeting time, which I also sent to you all. And I want to emphasize that in that email, I sent you my contact information. I'd be so happy to meet with you to talk about my understanding of the report, to help you dig into it yourselves because it's a really dense report. Honestly, really honestly, I mean this unnecessarily dense, written in a way that is confusing, but that, you know, you can, we can understand. So I want to emphasize four things that I had noticed by last week. The report is very disorganized. The long format recommendations, which appear like in line throughout the paper, are the only place where you can find out what the recommendation is based on. So you have to go there instead of to the summary to find out like, oh, okay, they're recommending that we add this number of officers. Where do I find the information that supports that suggestion? And then once you, so it's a little funny that that's not sort of in the, in the summary upfront, but also when they have that, like where it says like, this is the section number where you go to to find that, those section numbers are wrong for several of the recommendations. In fact, for the recommendation to add like a bunch of additional police officers, the section that it says that data is in is a section that doesn't exist. Now, like we can find it, it's a 300-page report, but like we can dig through, we can figure out where that is in the report, like what data they're using to support this, but like we shouldn't have to, right? Like a report that's that long, that you've spent so much money on, that you've given so many corrections to, should be correct in those ways. So that's pretty annoying. Also, I want to emphasize to you, like there are really simple little things they could do that are possible, that make a report like this much more functional. Every time it says section whatever, that could be a link that jumps you to the page, to the tables. The table of content at the beginning could be linked so that you can easily find your way and jump through this document. Those are things that are sort of a bare minimum of what we can expect a report like this to be like. And yeah, there's also like other organizational things, like there, like there's different size headers, but then the smaller text is a header that like then there's two subsections inside of it, and they're not all numbered, right? So there's a section called like leadership and communication, and then right under that, but in a bigger font, there's a section called leadership, and then way below that, there's one called communication. So these are two subsections within this section called leadership and communication, but like the font sizes would suggest that they're not subsections. It's very weird, and it's just a silly way of making the report, or silly thing that makes the report so much harder to read, that really, for such an expensive report, shouldn't, shouldn't be there. So in my efforts to sort of understand this report, those are the kinds of things I've been having to sort through. I also want to reemphasize the massive scope of their self plagiarism, which is in, like includes the things that they say are, that they, like some of the conclusions that they've made. Michelle said that they, of course, they rewrite things because they've used similar methods, but it's not just that. What I read before was things that they are stating about Urbana, that they've also stated about six other cities, or five other cities, I meant five or six. And one of the, the big pieces that they self plagiarize are these quotes by Sir Robert Peel, who, him back like 1850 died, but before that, before he died, he was, like his position on slavery was that maybe we should just hold on, like we don't want to end that too fast because like, what about the economy? That's absurd. This is not, and this is a person that they're quoting, that they're saying had really good ideas about policing. These are not people who we can trust in terms of the standards they choose and their positions on policing. I also call some attention in the email I sent you to some of the methods they use and the problems with that. For example, there's a Likert scale where the middle option of five was usually. So the scale is never, occasionally, usually, frequently, and always. And like for me, frequently is less often than usually, like you, anyway, this is so silly. I've shown this to a few of my colleagues, and we just laughed about it. It's such a silly, absurd thing methodologically to have messed up in such a big way. So anyway, I'll speak again in the next meeting, that's also today, but that's what I wanted to tell you last week. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Hey there, council. I'm going to talk a little about the history.
Would you please state your name for the record?
My name is Ben Jocelyn. I'm an Urbana resident and have been for a lot of my life, including at my birth. Going to talk a little about the history of this report. On March 6th of last year, Michelle Wein Zettel of Barry Dunn came before you all in this space for what I believe was the first public time to discuss with you the Public Safety Review Project. At around the three-minute mark of the Urbana City Council Meeting Minutes, she introduces herself and a couple of her team members before starting with the statement, "The purpose of this project is to look at your public safety services being delivered throughout the community, particularly by the police and fire departments, and to consider ways in which we might reimagine some of those services. This is a far cry from what you have received. For those of you who wish to point out that this is only the first phase of their work, I point back to Michelle's words where she followed her promise to reimagine public safety with, by stating the process they intended to follow." She said there would be three distinct phases. First, they would look at the current staffing. Second, they would look at alternatives and solicit community input. And after that, she said, "The last stage would be," and this is a quote, "to really kind of combine all of the information we get from the first two sections and coalesce that into a plan, into a series of recommendations and an architecture of sorts, for you look at and to consider or follow as you move forward." This was framed to the public and to you, not that they would first look at the police staffing and provide a report and recommendations, but instead that they would look at all of the information and gather all of the information before discussing and providing recommendations to you. So it is not simply my idea and the idea of other citizens that a consultant who is brought in to reimagine public safety should gather all the data before issuing said recommendations. It was in fact their stated plan when they came before you over 14 months ago. To all of your credit, council members followed up with questions and more information. Council member Bishop said that she would like to give a little background and said that the City of Urbana had set aside money in the 2021 budget for an evaluation of the city's public safety through the lens of racial justice, and that that's how Barry Dunn got involved. She went on to say that she's excited about how Barry Dunn had talked about fundamentally shifting the relationship between police and the community by shifting the agencies from independent organizations to those that are jointly operated and a community-owned resource. James Quisenberry asked about question, or asked questions about the citizen police review board, and Michelle said it'd be one of the focal points of the process. Council member Wilkins asked about the non-police response and about soliciting strong community input. Michelle said that they would engage a wide range of folks and reiterated their commitment to this new emerging lane where communities ask, should we re-envision public safety? And assured us that they had a robust model to check that here. Council member Colacetti said she was particularly excited about Barry Dunn because their robust community engagement process and their willingness to engage a broad range of alternatives. Wu, or council member Wu stated her excitement for the recommendations, and council member Hersi asked about public safety, or asked what public safety meant to Michelle, and Michelle responded by saying that police, fire, and EMS are only a narrow view of public safety. She then assured the council that they would look at public safety more broadly and stressed the importance of mental health. I commend all of you for how you started this project, and I ask that you remain committed to that vision. Just a little more history shows that the reason that the budget was set aside in 2021 was because the violent arrest of Ali Lewis in 2020 and the murder of George Floyd and the sort of uprising and upswell of community needs for a different view of public safety. And the fact that you all commissioned for a quarter million dollars a report to re-envision public safety and that you're now considering a $1.5 million budget increase for the police as a direct result of the public outcry because of the violent arrest of Ali Lewis and the murder of George Floyd is a miscarriage of justice and a miscarriage of the faith and trust put in you by the citizens of Urbana. I.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
We have some emails to read.
One from last week, and then we have two for this week. Yeah, we have someone.
Hi, my name's Sana. I live in Urbana. I'm a member of the CU Muslim Action Committee. I'm here to provide my public input in regards to budget and policing. You probably remember, maybe you remember me speaking in favor of the ceasefire resolution here many times. I spoke a lot about my position as a Muslim in this community and also from a human or moral perspective as a community member, but today I'm here to talk about the Barry Dunn report from the perspective of a researcher. I've mentioned before that I'm a researcher and educator at the University of Illinois. My work focuses on the intergenerational impacts of genocide on the body, and I've talked about genocide and colonialism here before. But the methods I use are mixed. I look at oral histories from community members, blood sample, quantitative blood sample data, and survey data as well. So mixed methods, just like in this report. The methods the Barry Dunn report uses to make its conclusions are intentionally more complicated than they need to be and are very inconsistent, echoing Dr. Camille Cobb's statements earlier. So if this report was going through the scientific peer review process, both reviewers would have rejected it, and it would have never been published. Last meeting, I heard what Michelle from Barry Dunn had to say about the report. They mentioned that the length of the report was for accessibility, but at the same time said perhaps we didn't understand the methods, and that's why we have so much criticism of it. This is the example of the kind of inconsistency that we see throughout the report. As an aside, I think we all intuitively know that length doesn't mean accessibility. Documents are accessible when they are clear and concise. That's technical writing 101. The idea that Professor Cobb, who did the community a favor by lending her time and expertise to do a deep dive into this report for our, all of our benefit, didn't understand it, is like frankly ludicrous. The report is supposedly so long to make it accessible to anyone who's reading at a fifth grade level and above. So anyone who takes the time to go through it should be able to understand it, and that's the case with any good report. As you know, that's not the case. I'm sure you've looked at the Barry Dunn report and like saw that it's quite confusing. You don't need to have done survey research and read survey reports to know that. The community has come up and discussed the issues with the report and cited information from the report itself as to why hiring more police is not the best step for solving problems in this community. I think the biggest issue is that we've not explored any alternatives. This report was not a community-based endeavor. The qualitative data solicited from community members regarding alternatives policing was very limited. No information about the demographics or number of community members solicited to be part of the study were made public, so that's really hard to evaluate in terms of methods, especially since I was not there for any of those community discussions. I've lived in the same apartment nearby to City Hall in Urbana for about four years, and I've been coming to city council meetings since October, and I had no idea that Barry Dunn was looking for community input. So if it's not community members like me who are supposed to be giving public input, who is going to these meetings? Even so, I don't know, even though I don't know who they talked to, it seems like most people they did talk to were interested in alternative models, but the models provided in the report were not community-specific. And it does say that the members of Barry Dunn are working with police to come up with alternative policing models. And, you know, as part of the Barry Dunn report, they claim that staff was reduced due to community calls to defund the police, but that, knowing the context, that wasn't the situation. So many of us have lost faith in the Barry Dunn report, so I'd like to propose that the city council allocate some more time to taking community input into what alternatives to policing could look like for us here. I don't know what that might look like, maybe a series of town halls, but right now, alternative options haven't been presented at all. I know budget discussions have a timeline, but hiring police is not time-sensitive in this community. Crime in Urbana is at a historic low. The report has already taken more time than initially planned. There's no need to rush into a decision that would cost the city millions without at least considering alternative options that come from the community, which I think was the initial goal of the report anyway. We've already spent this much time and money and effort into thinking about this. I think that like taking more time to really understand what the community wants and who the community is would be worth it. So I think there are a few paths this council could take, and so I would hope that you at least consider multiple options before jumping into something quite costly. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council? We have one email that came in last week related to this meeting from Dua Al-Dosuke, and then we have two emails today. You have another one?
I have one.
Okay, for today or last week?
For today.
Okay, I'm going to read the one intended for the meeting last week, and then at our next meeting, today's meeting, we'll read the ones for today. Got that?
One for today, next week.
No, the one for today, next meeting. We're on last week's meeting. Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
This is the rescheduled council meeting, just so we keep the record straight. Okay, so this is an email from Dua Al-Dosuke. It came in for the last Thursday. Please read my comment aloud at the next council meeting. My name is Dua Al-Dosuke, a CU local. For reference, I'm a Palestinian woman who's also a Muslim and wears a hijab. I would like to share my experience with UPD since just the beginning of this year. Number one, here in these chambers on a Monday evening in March, a police officer came up to me and asked me to leave when, after two hours of public input and a line of another 15 people ready to share their support for a ceasefire resolution were turned away. The chamber was filled with ceasefire chants. An officer asked me to leave, which is not inherently problematic. They could have been following orders, and that's a conversation for another time. What in. What ensued is very troubling, though. When the officer was challenged on asking us to leave by asking who issued that command, he lied to our faces to save face and said, 'I didn't ask you to leave.' Two, on that same night as we took it outside City Hall, we had a car run through our crowd. Thankfully, no one was injured. The car then had the audacity to circle back shortly after when the police officer there was informed of the situation. They had a chat with the driver, let them on their merry own way, despite dozens of us there who had just witnessed the attempted violence. Just a few weeks ago, UPD responded to a call by UIUC where five police forces showed up with tear gas canisters, batons, and riot gear against a group of students who felt they had no choice but to protest and some tents on their campus to demand an end to the ongoing genocidal attacks on Palestinians. The councilwoman who spoke of nothing but positive experiences may have been blessed to experience one side of UPD, but that is not my experience as a Palestinian woman calling for an end to the US-backed Israeli genocide against my family and community. I do not believe the officers in the UPD are acting maliciously, but my experience is similar to the experience of Black and Brown Americans here and across the nation. The police force is part of a system intended to protect some, a system with inherent bias against others, and a system where violent repression of the community is considered justified. It is a systemic issue that cannot be solved by granting more power to the police force and increasing their presence. We urge you to listen to your constituents, explore alternative response models, consider other options, and consider every constituent, not just some." Thank you. Okay. And the rest of the emails, I think we had two more that came in today, which will be read at the next meeting. Okay, council input and communication. Grace.
I just wanted to thank the public for the input that people have given by email and showing up here again tonight. I agree with some of the concerns about the Barry Dunn report and that it's inappropriate and not in line with the original goal of the study to jump into hiring more officers before even exploring alternative systems or programs. So just want to keep the idea alive, take my three minutes of my platform and say that I agree with that, support looking into alternatives. Do not support any additional hires before we've at least completed the rest of the study, gotten meaningful public input, and actually explored alternative systems, as was the goal when we set out. Thank you.
Any other council member communications? Joa, Joa.
Yeah, I guess ditto would be the easy way to say. What I want to say is I appreciate Grace raising, you know, with securing the funding for this study, the goal was to look at alternate responses. I'm still waiting on that information. We will see what comes of that. But I do think it's important that, you know, that is where this started. This process is not over. I recognize that there are grand ideas of where we could go in a lot of different ways, but I do want a complete picture before we look at long-lasting changes that are going to have significant impact on the city budget, going to have significant impact on staffing. So there is still a lot of information that I am expecting to see from this process and I think we still have a long way to go to make sure that community members are involved.
I would just remind folks that the Ward, three finalists of the proposed Ward maps currently can be found on the city website. There's a link on the homepage. They'll stay up through this Friday for comments from the public. Yes?
I just want to ask a clarifying question. How are people supposed to give feedback?
On the page that they're taken to, there's a special email address set up for that. And there will be a Ward Seven Suna meeting on May 30th and it takes place at St. Matthew's Church and that will be at 7:00 PM. Ward Seven, Ward Seven meeting. Okay. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business, which is ordinance number 2024-04-019, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance. And this is budget amendment number eight omnibus. There are a motion.
I'll put it on the table. Move Budget Ordinance, sorry, Ordinance Number 2024-04-019, Ordinance Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance for Budget Amendment Number Eight for Approval.
Second?
A second.
Discussion. Just as a reminder in general, this budget, it's been a while since we've actually looked at this. It covers funding for increasing the tower ladder, funding for covering tower ladder truck repairs. There's a fire station construction placeholder. It includes funds to potentially repay property taxes related to the Carl Hospital Foundation lawsuit. Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Woo?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Council member Evans.
Thank you. On behalf of the committee of the whole, we'd like to, we have nothing on the consent agenda. We'll move right to the regular agenda. And I motion for a vote on Resolution Number 2024-05-021R, a resolution approving the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2025 to 2029.
There are a second?
Second.
Is that a hand over here? I'm going to give it to Shandra this time. Any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Woo?
I'm just here to answer any questions you have. We made some minor adjustments we shared with you guys. Nothing of major context, some corrections, but just here for any questions if you have them.
Can you tell us what the corrections are?
Yeah, there was a point that we had just referenced that the last local motor fuel tax increase was made in 2011, not 2015. We updated that. We made a correction on the dates pertaining to the TIF four. We just had a typo in there from December 2026 to December 2025. I think that was the extent of the corrections that happened between last time we talked.
Questions for Tim? Grace?
Sorry, maybe did have one. But I think the fire station constructions being one of the big capital purchases here. And it looks like our final price here in the CIP is like 15.5 some million, right? And I thought when, just a few weeks ago, when we were doing this budget ordinance, that we were set to be on our target below 14.4. I don't know if you could help, is that like interest in that difference? Or what is the difference in some of those numbers?
No, the construction is still under the 14.4, right around like the 13.8 number. That's encumbered, that'll be encumbered in this year. Total construction for fire stations, the designs, another 1.2, that's already encumbered with that as well. There was the property acquisition, Filo Road, the property acquisition of Bradley. They all roll up into that bigger number. But the answer is that what's presented in the CIP is reflective of that 14.4 million for construction, which is about 600,000 over what our final guaranteed maximum price is going to be.
Thank you. Chris?
So Tim, your May 6th email to me was for Colorado Avenue resurfacing. Resolution Number 2024-05-025R, a supplemental resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Boneyard Creek Crossing Bridge repairs. And Resolution Number 2024-05-026R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Springfield Avenue, Wright Street to Gregory Street resurfacing. And finally, Resolution Number 2024-05-027R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, state motor fuel tax for Vine Street and Illinois Street improvements. I motion that we bundle all these resolutions.
Second.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Sharice. Will all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. You may now make an omnibus motion.
I will. I would like to make an omnibus motion for approval of 022R, 023R, Resolution 024R, 25R, 026R.
Wait till everyone gets situated. Opposed? Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? Changes? Okay. Presentations and public input. Is there any input for tonight's meeting? Public input, we don't have any presentations.
Hi again, council. I'll say my name again, I'm Camille Cobb. I won't tell you again who I am. So in this time, I'd like to describe to you the process that Barry Dunn used to come up with this figure of 44 officers who are needed and then raise some questions about whether that, the assumptions that they're making along the way are reasonable assumptions. So because, and so they've used, you know, like 30 pages to discern we need. And so in this report, that number is 2.55. Yeah. And so we needed, you know, if we needed in Urbana the previous year or whatever year of data that Barry Dunn was looking at. And that's factoring in both the primary response and the backup response for the times when that's needed, right? So we figure out, we multiply the number of crime calls for service times the average time it takes to respond to that, the number of service ones times the number of time, whatever. We then get a number.
In response to questions that were given, I thought it was amazing how many of the responses sort of trailed with, "You didn't understand sort of the numbers that were there. We've got data from multiple different sources, but it's kind of hard to discern, so I want you to trust our professional expertise." But even more importantly, there were pieces where there was really clear narrative bias towards hiring more police officers. One of those questions asked was, in their report, they give a description of the city of Urbana where they talk about how it's uniquely located between Chicago and Nashville and talks about how that puts us in this sort of mini metropolis area where we should then be sort of aware of crime that may be coming in along the interstate highways. A question was put to them about whether or not there's any sort of evidence that being located on that highway impacted the amount of crime we needed or any sort of numbers to that effect. And I was sort of surprised when Michelle came forward and said, "No, we don't have any sort of data that's been collected, but we do know that in this modern era, it's very common for, you know, criminals to use the internet." Police came in and they brought in, you know, state troopers in the Urbana Police Department, Champagne Police Department. They had folks standing there with cans of pepper spray. I've seen that kind of tactic before. I've never in my life before seen that not end in violent arrest. I don't believe that if they had been told to, our police department would not have also put their knees in my back in the back of lots of other students in the mud puddle they'd been standing in for hours on end. I think somebody else called them off, but I don't think that we're used to that level of arrest and I don't think that our police department is as happy to like go and arrest people the way that it is in some other folks. So I've never seen a de-escalation happen the way that it did there. A few tents that were set up on the lawn at the university, at least five, if not more, police departments were brought in, including ours. And I don't think, I do think that our police department is better and I don't mean to say that all police departments are equal and I'm glad that our police has more training. And yet, the way that we locate public service and public safety, I think can start by putting in community resource and other pieces. So just mean to say, where we locate and where we focus on supporting our community, that's what I see, that's what I want to see paid for first. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sana. I live in Urbana. I just wanted to talk or ask, and I know you can't respond to me, but I'll ask anyway. Based on the community input section on what was published in the Barry Dunn report, like what were you hoping to know from the community? And I think like maybe talking about or thinking about what those questions are before soliciting feedback from the community as like a council might be something helpful. Because from the Barry Dunn report, you don't get a sense that they were, like the community was asked questions like, "How, where do you feel safe in Urbana? What are things that make you feel safe in your community? What are, where are places that you go when you want to feel safe? How many times is that the police, right? And like, maybe that's all the time, right? But we don't know the answer to those questions and it doesn't seem like Barry Dunn was soliciting that. I wonder if there was any like effort to try to talk to people in your individual wards about what kinds of questions you want, like you'd want a consultant to be asking the community? So, you know, moving forward, if we're trying to think about what alternative responses to policing could look like and how that could be really community-based, I think it's really important to also like frame those questions based on what people are wanting to know and even just what you are wanting to know, right? Because it seems like the basis of the Barry Dunn report was done with like a lens on alternatives to policing and racial justice and it doesn't seem like community members were asked any direct questions about those things. So if that's what's really important to you, I just would like to see that information be public. That's all, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the committee of the whole? Okay, thank you. Steph? Oh, emails, that's right, I do have email here to read. Sorry. To Urbana City Council from Julie Watkins. I have listened to public comment from a council meeting video, April 29, 2024. I wanted to add my thoughts about the Barry Dunn report. I had been trying to follow the discussion of this issue but was not able to follow it closely in the last few months because of personal household issues. I am going on what other people said and the meetings I was able to attend last year. I can't remember if I had said this, I can't remember if I had said this in public comment to Urbana City Council, but I know I did say it at two different Barry Dunn public meetings, which were unrecorded. As speakers emphasized at the April 29th... Is there something happening back there that needs to stop? Take it outside. As speakers emphasized at the April 29th meeting, the original intent was alternatives to policing. I asked on the web form, got no answer. I forgot what the response was in person. I objected to Barry Dunn that they either didn't follow directions or got wrong instructions because the initial survey questions on the website were about police and fire, not alternatives. I felt it was an attempt to skew the results. Having the experience, I am not, I'm not surprised, having that experience, I'm not surprised that people who were able to analyze the report are concluding that the recommendations don't match the data. If the police contract mandates 12-hour shifts, then it should be doubly more practical to hire non-sworn community service people to staff peak service times for shorter shifts with more training, with less per hour cost to Urbana. I agree with the people who spoke previously to accept the data, but revisit the recommendations. Thank you to everyone who has spoken on this issue and thank you for your consideration of my additional input, Julie Watkins.
Number of unhoused people to food insecurity and utility shut-offs, which the Cunningham Township addresses, which should take precedent over any consideration to increase police budgets or hire more officers. Increased policing simply does not make sense, especially given that most twerked to the remnants of our democracy. Thank you for your consideration, Lila Leopold. Thank you for your consideration, Lila Leopold.
Okay. Actually, we have the same one. Are there any more emails that need to be read or for public input? Okay, moving on then, staff reports. Okay, we have no staff reports, new business. We have on the agenda, resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero five dash zero eight, uh, two eight R, a resolution approving the city of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, Champagne, Urbana, Champagne County, FY twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five annual action plan. And we have Brendan and I forget your name, sir.
Nicholson.
Nick? Is it Nick? Yeah.
That's me.
Okay. To give us information regarding this.
So the plan we will be submitting to HUD in July, and it outlines the, the activities and the projects that we will be undertaking with our, our federal resources in this upcoming fiscal year. We will be receiving three, an allocation of similarly, Congress says they kept it stable from last year, but with inflation, that will result in essentially a decrease in, in funding to the Community Development Block Grant Program. Due to our prior year balances, we're not anticipating any impacts to our current programming or services that we offer, and we're hopeful that in the coming years that will change. So now I'll pass it over to Nick to talk a little bit about the public input process that we went over.
Thanks, Braden. So the plan itself, which is included as an attachment, includes a more detailed summary of the public input process and some of the things we heard from folks. Complete survey results are also included as an attachment, but I'll just provide a quick overview of how we saw outreach and some of the things we heard from folks. So to start with, we held two public hearings concurrent with our Community Development Commission meetings, one in the fall of last year and one in January of this year. And we also held focus groups with different groups of service providers in the community, including the Continuum of Service Providers to the Homeless, the Human Services Council, and the Community Reinvestment Group. We also had a community needs survey that was shared through city social media, community partner organizations, and through mailings to households in our community development target areas. The last one, we hadn't previously done mailings to our target areas for these surveys for our annual action plans, and we did receive a pretty large volume of responses this year compared to previous years. So that's something we were happy to see pay off in terms of outreach and will look to build on in the future. Just in terms of local needs, over half of service providers filling out the survey also identified awareness of services, transportation, cost of services, and provider capacity as obstacles they've seen clients face when accessing services. And then regarding service priorities, providers were most likely to rate affordable rental housing, rental assistance, homelessness prevention, and food security as high service priorities. Residents taking the survey most frequently cited housing affordability, public safety, and infrastructure needs as concerns in their neighborhood. And then homeowners and prospective homeowners taking the survey identified housing prices and housing stock conditions as the obstacles they regularly faced. And then similarly renters most frequently reported struggling with cost and poor property conditions as obstacles. And then residents in general, in terms of service priorities, most frequently identified both affordable rental and home buyer housing, rehabilitation assistance.
National to our annual action planning process. We will submit all of this public input to HUD along with our plan. You know, we are, we design our, our plans and our, our projects based on what we're hearing from the community. So we were really excited to see that we got a pretty good feedback from, from our residents on that. So once the plan is approved, like I mentioned earlier, we will be submitting it to HUD. The deadline is July sixteenth. The program year starts July first, so this funding will, will take effect July first of twenty twenty four. So yeah, we'll take any questions.
Mary Alice.
I have two quick questions. The first one is that in your very first goal, provide decent affordable housing, housing opportunities, you say home has four million dollars for that particular one. I assume that includes rollover?
It does include rollover. It also includes our home ARP balance as well.
Which is about two? I noticed one of them was two. I don't remember which one, though.
The home ARP carryover balance is just over two million.
Okay. And then my second question is, can you tell me, out of the three different funds, which one is limited in terms of services?
Yeah, so the, the community development block grant is the more flexible pool of funding. That's the, that's the funding source we use for like our youth services, for example. Home funds have to be used for, to stick with, within the bounds of the budget that we have. So, so you will see, for example, in CDBG, our, our housing rehabilitation line under the CDBG housing programs, we've budgeted a hundred and thirty-five thousand for that. So if, if we think that there's going to need to be a change to that budget, we would come back to all of you with a budget amendment.
Okay, because I just saw it lumped with senior grant, emergency grant, access grant, roof repair.
Yeah, oh, oh, yes. Those are all within that, that one category, and we, we could, within that, go, yeah, back and forth.
Okay, thanks.
Grace.
Thank you. I've got a few here, I hope, quick questions. Clarify, Mary Alice, you're talking about that fifteen percent cap for public services and CDBG, and that's why the youth services can only be fifty-eight K out of this, but then the rest comes from the general fund or other sources in the pot that we've had historically, right?
Correct, for our youth services program.
And then I'm guessing then, is it the same thing for CHODO if there's only thirty K, but that's usually a bigger pot? Are there other sources for that as well?
No, so for our community housing development organization set asides, the, the CHODO operating, that's capped at five percent, which is why we're at that thirty thousand dollars. And, and we don't have another source to kind of supplement that. So it's, you know, that's the cap we have to stick with. And then the CHODO set aside, which is for development, so actually like construction costs, that one, we have a, a fifteen percent minimum that we have to commit. So this year, we're committing slightly more just because our two CHODOs Habitat for Humanity and First Followers, they've had a lot of high-quality projects, so we're committing more, we're committing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that this year.
Cool, thank you. And would we still approve any new expenditures? Like, for example, if we wanted to use any of these earmarked funds for demo and rehabilitation on city-owned property downtown buildings, all of that would be a several, separate approval process? Is that correct?
Yeah, any sort of agreement or contract that has to be approved would come back to council.
Okay, and then last one, I'm still so confused why fire station equipment is still in here and how that plays into anything.
So that's an eligible expense under Community Development Block Grant funding, and it would be for, it would not be any sort of construction or hard costs. It would be for like supplies that are used to serve residents, like EMS or whatever sort of equipment that they might use. So we have that in there just in case there were something to come up, so we can be responsive to those needs, but it's an eligible expense, and so traditionally, we've included it in there. During COVID, I think there were some materials that were purchased, and equipment purchased for the fire department to help them respond to, to emergency calls.
Okay, thank you so much for explaining that. And you think then outside of kind of COVID-specialized equipment, that's not something typically that we've had an expenditure need come up? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Braden or Nick? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, who, oh, sorry, go ahead, Shandra.
I was going to do a motion. I'll move approval of resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero five dash zero two A R, a resolution approving the city of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, Champagne, Urbana, Champagne County, fiscal year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five annual action plan onto city council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
So Shandra moved it, James seconded it for consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion? Further questions for the presenters? Grace?
I just, thanks Braden and Nick on this new process this year, something that I find confusing and frustrating and appreciate you explaining more of it, and really appreciate the, the money that goes out here. So appreciate what you're doing in your office. Thank you.
Okay, so can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolutions to amend to home consortium subrecipient agreements, one with Champagne County Regional Planning Commission, the other with their grant period, so they can roll over their balances to next fiscal year and continue their program. Both of these programs were housing navigation programs, so for their clients to help them find and retain stable housing. So RPC had a balance of, has a balance of seventy thousand dollars that they are hoping to roll over to the next fiscal year. CU at Home has a balance of about twenty-two thousand dollars that they are hoping to roll over to the next fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and by Mary Alice and seconded by Grace. Discussion? Can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, and that's passed also to consent agenda. Next is number four. Thank you, Braden. A resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero five dash zero three one R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement to share costs for use of a GPS survey-based station. Hello, Tim?
Good evening.
Okay. Tim will be giving us information?
Operations and maintenance has been found to not be excessive for them, so that would be my prediction on why our, our cost share has went down for the next five-year term. We don't anticipate any change in service or anything of that nature.
Are there any questions for Tim? Okay. So can I entertain a motion? Somebody?
I'll move resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero five dash zero three one R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement to share costs for the use of GPS survey-based station onto city council for approval on the consent agenda.
Mary Alice?
I just had a quick question, because I think in terms of who this is with, so there's multiple people here, not just the university.
The, the.
Multiple entities.
The IGA is between us and multiple entities that are part of the GIS consortium.
Right. So before, before this proceeds, can we get a second on the motion that's on the floor, and then we can proceed to questions and discussion? Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry.
Second? Anybody seconding?
Grace.
Grace, thank you, Grace. Now, moving on again, going back to Mary Alice.
I just wanted to confirm, it's all the different groups already in CGIS.
Not, not a hundred percent of the groups in CGIS, the ones that can actually take advantage due to their locality to the university. But yes, essentially, we are entering an IGA with others to then authorize the consortium to enter into an agreement with U of I for the cost sharing. So we pay the consortium, the consortium pays U of I.
Any other questions for Tim? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda it is. Ordinance number twenty twenty four zero five zero two zero, ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter twenty four, Section twenty four forty-nine, reimbursement for sanitary sewer repairs.
Okay, so just some Cliff Notes on this. This is a program that we've operated going on sixteen, seventeen years now, I think, and it's had multiple iterations. The, the intent of this reimbursement program was to offset costs of people's, extra costs of maintaining their sewer lateral within the, the right-of-way and the extra cost of repairing, replacing pavement and things of that nature. The, the Cliff Notes of this is that we're trying, what we're doing in the Dr. Ellis subdivision with the lateral lining program, we'd like to extend this as an option within this program. So if and when someone finds that they've got a lateral repair that's within the right-of-way and would require potential digging, if, if it is in shape that would allow it to be lined in lieu of open excavation, we would like to just formalize that as an alternative within this program, which ultimately ends up saving the city money, it saves the, the homeowners' money, and it's a proven means and methods that we've done on our own sewer lines for decades now. So what we're trying to do with this is really just introduce it as an option within the amendment. And then I've got a little bit more background information to share with you, but that's kind of the overview. You know, like I talked about, this would be, it's aren't bad enough that they can actually be lined through. It's aren't bad enough that they can actually be lined through, which reduces the budget impacts from including this. So in many cases, we're feasible, not every repair is going to be eligible to be lined through. Some are just so bad that they're, you have to dig them up, but for ones that could and would impact the right. In theory, if the last ten of these were all feasible to be lined in lieu of repair, and that may not be the truth in the matter, but just for a comparison, what, what that would look like for us is, the total costs of those last ten repairs have been a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, so a little over eleven thousand dollars on average. If we were able to line a hundred percent of those, that would have been about half the price of fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars to do the same effort. And the city's reimbursement would have, on the last ten repairs, has been forty-four thousand. If we were able to line it, it would reduce to thirty thousand dollars, saving the city about fourteen thousand dollars on the last ten repairs. Also, a big impact here is the cost paid by property owners for these type of things. The, the last ten repairs have cost property owners about seventy-two thousand dollars, seventy-two hundred dollars per lateral. And with CIPP lining, and as we proposed it here, we would project that that would cost them closer to twenty-five thousand dollars, saving them about forty-seven hundred dollars per property if feasible. It, the way it's proposed now, you know, we would, we would propose that if this was a feasible alternative for repair within the right-of-ways, the city would help with costs within the right-of-way, not outside of the right-of-way. So if they opted to do their entire line, which is probably pretty typical, that we would participate in the portion within the right-of-way. There's a chart there to the right that just kind of shows you the, the cost comparisons and how much further our money would stretch in those, in the scenarios if, if and when we can use the CIPP lining in lieu of replace and repair. And this is just the amended text that would essentially allow this as a feasible alternative to repair and replacement within the right-of-way. They would still have to be eligible for the reimbursement program as written, no other changes would be made to that. So if someone had a, had a replacement that was required, we would still be entertaining those as part of the program, and there'd be no change to that. And that's the overview.
Chris?
Yeah, Tim, thanks for the presentation, and, and this question, maybe, I don't know, Sharice, this might be a question for you, but can the property owners afford these costs?
I mean, you're.
I guess you have.
You're, you're stuck with it. I mean, if, if it's bad enough and you're blocked and you can't go anywhere, you become inhabitable eventually, so you'll be stuck with it one way or the other, or your facility would be uninhabitable eventually. That's not like that happens immediately, but if you don't have use of your plumbing services and things like that, there are other issues that, that could lead into HVAC things and other instances that could further deteriorate the property.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice?
So I remember when we changed the reimbursement plan, and it was at ninety-five percent. This is different, right? Because we're not, part of that was had to do with tearing up the road.
Correct.
So is the cost share fifty-five percent for the, no?
It's essentially the, with, if lining is eligible, the ninety-five percent still governs. Typically, if someone ends up lining their entire liner, they're never going to hit the ninety-five percent on the portion within the right-of-way.
Right.
It'll probably end up being closer to like a fifty-fifty split, but in theory, we would honor up to ninety-five percent of the cost.
Of the area that we are from right-of-way.
Correct. So there are things where you can do, they're, they're basically sleeve liners, so you could go in and do a five or ten-foot section instead of doing your entire lateral if you didn't need to.
So did you say it was, if you did an entire lateral, a standard size, I know they're not standard whatsoever, what is, what is the full cost?
Well, for the ARPA lateral lining project, we've budgeted about $8,500 per lining. That includes some extra things, like if we have to do spot repairs with it, if we have to introduce a clean-out. If a clean-out's present and no spot repairs are necessary, that probably comes down from there closer to like the $5,000 to $6,000 range.
This might be a silly question, but how would this be impacted if you had blockage in the sewer? So I mean, tree roots, you have to call somebody to clean it out, how would the liner impact that?
I mean, technically, tree roots and stuff are going to just get in through breaks and cracks in the pipe and things like that. Typically, what would happen is we would go in, we would cut out any present roots, and then we would line through, and the roots would not have infiltration points anymore, because there's no joints in a liner.
Thank you.
Grace?
Could you remind me, with the Dr. Ellis ARPA program, is that covering private property lining as well, or only the city? I thought that was also private.
The, the Dr. Ellis covers the private.
Okay.
And, and that's part of us piloting that, was the idea of we want to, we want people to participate, so we're doing more than what is part of just this reimbursement program. And part of this is, I, I view this as an interim step, you know, just to get this introduced. We have instances that have come up where lining would be more affordable, but it, it's like a $15,000 repair where the city would pick up $13,000 of it, they could line it for $7,000, but with no incentive for them, they end up paying less for the repair, and the city pays a bunch more. So the idea is getting it, getting this in there as an option for when they're able. And then I think what we learn out of the Dr. Ellis subdivision pilot lining program will probably inform us more on what we want to do long-term, and do we want to, I could see potentially at some point, the, the lateral lining being peeled out as a whole separate program eventually, but we would like to get it introduced so that if and when these come up, we can make smart decisions along the way.
Yeah, it totally makes sense. And so then this one is just adding the lining as an option for the reimbursement for, you said, up to 95% of the cost on the city-owned right-of-way.
Correct.
Thank you.
They, they still have to meet all the provisions that are currently within the lateral reimbursement program. There has to be recorded issues at the property, there has to be evidence of the breakage within the right-of-way, things of that nature. And with lining, we'll probably be asking people, typically what happens is they have someone come out, snake a line, televise a line, we'll ask them to just get a copy of the, the, the recording so that we can just verify, you know, we don't want a contractor coming in and just saying, yeah, we can line through it, even though they shouldn't, like we're still going to kind of do a QAQC on some of that stuff.
Grace?
I was just, just nerdily curious, if you had any information you could share at a later time about the actual material composition of these liners and their plastics, just with that being the new emerging thing of the microplastics and PFAS that are poisoning us now, but I mean, I maybe have lead pipes in my drinking water thing in my house at that point, so it's just as we're always learning more, and just curious if there's any foreseeable things with this as well.
Yeah, we've got data on that. That came up through the Dr. Ellis subdivision lining program, and we've got a bunch of information on all of that.
Thank you, yeah, I'd be curious on that.
Mary Alice, could you take the chair for a minute?
I will take the chair, and the chair recognizes Sharice.
Okay, I have some questions, since I am uniquely informed regarding this. A few years back, my issue and my question was why we want to add the CIPP now? That's great. I always wondered how come pipe busting wasn't part of the reimbursement program, which is also less invasive and it costs less. And I would still like to see that included, if we're going to include the lining, I don't know, I don't, also do not understand why we can't include the pipe busting process that can be done, especially when a pipe has to go across the street to get to the main lateral. So I don't know if this is something that we should bring up at a different time, or if it's something that can also be added while we're adding the CIPP. The other question I have, of course, is also regarding the fact that with the, with the reimbursement program, and I don't know if this is still in place, people were required to fill out a tax form. And, and I don't know if that's still in place regarding that they have to claim income that they may have to pay interest on if they got a, a loan from a bank or something, and how we are working where that's concerned with the communities that may have to deal with this type of, of a repair. So can you give me some information on that?
Sure. So pipe, pipe bursting, we'd have to look into a little bit more. It's not that we can't do it, it's, it is a means and methods that's used from time to time. Typically, my understanding those, you would need an access point on both ends, which would then still require you, if you have to get into the street, to have a point there of connection.
You have to have at least a clean-out.
You, I, I think with pipe bursting, you have to have two ends. So you potentially still have to be digging up that other end to make sure that that connection is solid. And typically, pipe bursting, there's less contractors that do that stuff. Usually, you're looking at pipe bursting, lining is more affordable, you're looking at pipe bursting if you don't have area within your pipe. So super small pipes where you couldn't do a liner and still maintain adequate flow would be a concern there, but you know, typically, most of our pipes are four to six inches for residential, and lining would still be approved in those size of pipes for residential laterals. So it's not that pipe bursting couldn't be entertained, I think we'd have to look into it a little bit more to just see the viability of it, and financially, it's probably, wouldn't be the preferred method over lining.
I'm just thinking in terms of if a pipe has to be replaced, rather than cut up the street to get to it, if, if that's where the repair needs to be, that there would be a way of doing a pipe bursting process, and that costs less than cutting up the street and excavating and doing all that other stuff. Am I incorrect in thinking that?
I, I think the, the hang-up, when I think about it, the logistics of it, and I've not done pipe bursting myself, but the, with a pipe bursting, typically, when you're doing it like on a municipal sewer, you're going manhole to manhole, because you have connection points that you can get down in there and ensure your connections are made up once you've pipe bursted. So if you try to do pipe bursting from a clean-out, you don't have a point of access, you don't have a manhole unless your service is coming into a manhole to ensure that connection made, so you'd be basically pipe bursting in, and then you don't have a connection make-up there, which potentially, that's where a lot of problems happen, is the connections to the main lines. So you may end up having to dig up the street either way if you're pipe bursting. I'd have to confirm that, but I, I would, I would say we could look into it, but I wouldn't propose to try to push it forward with this currently.
Okay.
And then your other one?
I would definitely like for you to look into it.
We, we will look into it. I'll, I'll get you some information on it.
Okay, and the other question I had was about having citizens or residents fill out a tax 1090, I forget what it was, W-9.
Yeah, yeah, and as of now, I don't think there's any getting around that just from financial responsibilities. If the city pays out money to a vendor over a certain amount, I think we were required to report that.
So does, does, does the vendor fill out the W-9, or the resident fills out the W-9?
The resident would be considered the vendor in that situation. They, they're the ones that we're paying, we're not paying the contractor.
Okay, yeah, still have an issue with that.
And we, we've looked at trying to get creative financing there, it's just, there's not a good way that we've found yet. So we're, we're still working at that, but as of now, the, the research has not been supportive of us.
Yeah, because I know, I know the last discussion regarding that with you, with you and I, and I, and I think Mayor Marlin was there, and Robert Lewis, and we were talking about a way that the city could provide that kind of, some, some kind of help without having people fill out a 109, W-9 regarding that.
Yeah, I, my guess is the W-9 is probably hard to get around, but I think what we were looking at was trying to help set up something with like a local bank where people could get the initial portion financed, because the city was going to pay so much back immediately to relieve the burden for financial institutions to loan that money.
Yeah, because everybody doesn't have $5,000, $10,000 to.
Right.
Because that's about the cost of it.
Yep.
Okey-dokey.
So that, that was something that we looked into, the previous city council did. Would you like the chair back?
Yes, I would.
All right, I relinquish it back to you.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion at this point, if anyone wants to give one.
I can give a motion. I move, this is an ordinance, so it can't go on consent, correct? Oh, Melissa. I will move on the consent agenda to City Council, Ordinance Number 2024-05-020, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 24, Section 24 hyphen 49, reimbursement for sanitary sewer repairs.
Give it a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jaya. Discussion? Okay, Clerk, will you please call the roll?
You can do a voice vote, since it's not final action, because we'll take roll call at council, even though it's an ordinance.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? And so it passes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, thanks for all the information. And now, council input and communication. Anybody got something to say? Okay, Mayor Marlin.
Just want to let folks know that the groundbreaking ceremony for the fire stations is set for June 12th at 11:00 a.m. at the Goodwin and Bradley Avenue site. And you'll be, there'll be more details to follow, but save the date.
Any other information that needs to be passed? Okay, thank you for coming in. I can adjourn this.